If permitted. Understandably, there has been substantial public interest in the proposals evident from the volume of representations received on this application and the redevelopment of Goodison Park as the People's Project. As the two proposals are interdependent, they have thus been brought together today to the planning committee for deliberation. One as a detailed application and one for an outline planning permission. And we have details and extended presentation to be displayed comprising images and visuals showing details of the proposals. We also have up to fifty representatives and agents here to address us. And once they have concluded from the Everton Football Club end, we will then invite questions. I hope that's okay with everybody. And then we will be passing over to councillor Tom Crohn for him to speak and again questions and then over to our case officer. So we begin our historic deliberations today. So Michael, I think over to you now.
Thank you, Chair. Much appreciated. In terms of the practicalities and the technical checks, I'm just going to go through each member of the committee in turn to make sure you can see and hear us clearly. As the chairs deliver their introductory address, the chair's audio and video establishes working correctly. And just briefly reminded to everyone to please ensure your microphones are off and less speaking, just so the audio is clear both for yourselves and for members of the public viewing. So moving firstly to councillor Helen Thompson, have you been able to join us as yet?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, Helen. Councillor Sarah Doyle, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, good morning, Michael.
Thank you. Councillor Joe Hanson, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Okay, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Councillor Malcolm Kennedy, welcome. Can you hear us okay? You're on mute, please, Malcolm. Just need to test your audio. I'll come back to you in a second, Malcolm. Councillor Billy Marat, can you hear us okay?
Everything's fine. Thank you, Michael.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor John Prince, welcome.
Thank you, Michael. No problem.
For purposes of clarity, councillor Prince is joining us as an alternate for councillor Dave Cummings, who has submitted his apologies for today's meeting. Councillor Meno Juarez, good morning and welcome.
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Councillor Steve Radford, good morning. Can you hear us okay? Excellent, thank you. Malcolm, just to check your audio, if you're able to unmute yourself now.
I'm unmuted, I think. That's...
Excellent. Thank you, Malcolm. That's nice and clear.
I'm struggling to...
Go on, Malcolm.
I've got to go like that.
Okay. Thank you, Malcolm. If you want to remute yourself, that's excellent. Then we can move further on into proceedings. In terms of our first item of business, clearly we have the formal requirement in terms of declaration of interests. So at this stage, can I invite members to declare any relevant interests clearly for the benefit of the public record? If you could indicate now. All that non-to-declare, just members are reminded in the event that you do recall or become aware of any interest during the course of debate, you can declare a relevant interest at any time. We'll now move on to our first item of business, which relates to the Bramley-Moore Dock site on Regent Road in Liverpool in Kirkcaldy Ward. Just for reference by members of the committee, it's important to note at this juncture that there are actually three applications we're dealing with for the first item of business. The planning application itself in relation to the stadia, as well as two listed building consent applications. The details of the three applications are referenced in detail in the case officer report. But just for the benefit of the public record, the listed building consent references are twenty L two five four three and twenty L two six one one, which relate to the dock entrance wall and the dock retaining walls respectively. Chair, as you are aware, we have a number of presenters and delegates on behalf of the applicants, if you wish to invite them in accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, Michael. Now, we do have an hour as I've indicated. So I'm going to invite, first of all, because you're first on my list, Denise. Denise, all right, that's a deal. And I'd like to say to Denise that it would probably be easier if you introduce the remaining people, because I have an order here that you might not want to follow. Whereas as long as you come in and clearly introduce yourselves, I can see when the listed speakers have all had their say. Would that be acceptable to you, Denise?
Yes, no problem at all.
Okay, so if you'd like to come in now, Denise, I believe you're going to be giving us a voiceover for all the slides and visuals.
I'm going to be doing the introductory section and then handing over to Colin Chong, who's our Stadium Development Director, and Ian Jenkins from CBRE. So I will do just the introductory section, if that's okay with you.
You organise it as you see fit. That's great. Thank you, Denise.
Okay, thank you very much. And councillors and members of the planning committee, thank you for your time this morning. Before my colleagues Ian and Colin talk through the detail of our planning application for a new stadium at Bramley-Moore Dock, I wanted to spend a few minutes reflecting on our journey to this point and the importance of this project to our football club, our city region and the country as a whole. As you know, football is a major and important part of the life of this city. And since our formation in eighteen seventy-eight, we have enjoyed success on the pitch, winning nine league championships, five FA Cups and a European Cup Winners' Cup, whilst always remaining deeply embedded as a force for good in our local community, providing social cohesion and acting as an important economic driver to our local economy. As our global profile has grown in recent decades, so has our commitment to maintaining our connection and supporting the people of this city, our supporters and the wider community. And that commitment underpinned our approach when we began work on our new stadium project. From the very start of this process, we have been open and transparent, consultative and collaborative with our supporters, members of the public and the numerous important stakeholder groups and organisations, including Liverpool City Council and Historic England. In fact, the designs within our application are reflective of the desires of our supporters, who shaped our eleven key principles at the outset of our design process, which is more than three years ago. And over this period, we have engaged consistently and comprehensively gathering feedback from stakeholders from across and beyond our city region to inform our plans. This collaborative approach, which included two of the largest public consultations the city has ever seen, with more than sixty-three thousand people taking part, has resulted in the project plans that have been shaped not only by our supporters but by the public and the key stakeholders. Additionally, it has resulted in our approach to consultation being cited as an exemplar and securing national planning awards. Most importantly, our approach and the resulting plans have secured overwhelming public support. And this support, which you will hear more about later, has not only been for the design of the stadium, but also for its location at Bramley-Moore Dock. It was important for supporters and the public that we stayed within our city and also our North Liverpool heartland. With the redevelopment of Goodison Park simply not possible, an extensive citywide assessment of possible sites found Bramley-Moore Dock, a semi-derelict Bramfield site at the far end of the northern dock to be not only the right location, but the only location in the city suitable and available for our new stadium. Of course, a new stadium for Everton provides us a platform for growth and will support our objectives for our field success. It will provide some of the best available facilities for our supporters as we aim to create one of the best matchday experiences in the country. It will also become a new attraction on non-matchdays with civic space offering great views of the Mersey Dock system and preserved heritage assets on the site. Our plans will support the growth of our important visitor economy sector, creating an attraction that visitors to the city from across the world will want to visit. And the stadium site and our approach to running it will be underpinned by principles of inclusivity and sustainability. A stadium that is welcoming to everyone and becomes one of the most environmentally sustainable stadiums in the UK. Now, while the stadium provides a platform for growth for the club, it will also provide a crucial social and economic boost to our city, the wider city region and indeed the north of England at a time when it has never been more needed. A fifty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight capacity football stadium at Bramley-Moore Dock will significantly boost the economy, creating opportunities for existing and new businesses, raising aspirations for local people through tens of thousands of new jobs and training opportunities and acting as a catalyst for further development. It will also enable our innovative plans for a range of community-led developments at our current Goodison Park home to begin. Plans which will create significant lasting societal value in one of the most deprived areas of our city. The results of our consultation evidence that local people understood the benefits that our scheme will bring to our city and the wider region. And they appreciated the important transformational effect it will have. They could see easily that this is much more than a new home for Everton. It is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to regenerate an area of the city that greatly needs investment. And this was all prior to the pandemic. Clearly, the last twelve months have been profoundly challenging and will have an impact on all aspects of society for many years to come. However, through this scheme, there is an opportunity to immediately drive forward with what will be a key part of the region's post-pandemic recovery plan. An immediate, live opportunity to kickstart the levelling up agenda that is so often talked about and is now so critical for our nation. In fact, there can be few, if any, schemes nationally that so clearly responds to this agenda. So with your support to our new stadium project, we can immediately start levelling up right here, right now, across our city region. I would now like to hand over to Colin and Ian, who will talk you through our proposals in detail.
Thank you, Denise. Good morning, council members and committee members. My name is Colin Chong. I'm Stadium Development Director for Everton Football Club. And just to probably already reiterate what Denise has already said, the People's Project strategy encompassed eleven key principles. These principles were consulted upon with fans and other key stakeholder groups even before we finalised our brief. These agreed principles carried significant weight and effectively became the project brief. However, it is worth stating that this project is without a doubt a civic regeneration project for Liverpool and the adult community. Regardless of football affinity, this truly is the People's Project. Next slide. The club's commitment to North Liverpool cannot be understated. We've already delivered and maintained a substantial estate within L4 and this services the local community to great effect and it proved invaluable particularly during the last twelve months. Both Bramley-Moore Dock Stadium and the Goodison Legacy Project will deliver seven hundred and fifty million pounds of private investment in the most socially economically challenged area of the country. The situation undoubtedly made worse, as Denise said, by Covid nineteen. This is three quarters of a billion pounds' worth of investment. People's Project is not just about bricks and mortar. It is in fact a legacy project and has been considered in detail well before we even established the eleven principles noted earlier. The Legacy Project will help thousands of people within the North Liverpool area long after the cranes and builders have left. And my colleague Alex will touch on this a little later. Next slide. The club recognises the limitations in Goodison Park and this is why we need to move. We've been looking for around about twenty-five years now for a new home, notably King's Dock, Kirby and most recently Walthamstow Park. Whilst Goodison is much loved, it is shown her age. There is a lack of modern facilities in terms of revenue and opportunities and welfare facilities located within the stadium. Goodison Park has a limited capacity, both in seating and comfort levels on concourses. It has structural and physical site constraints such as obstructed views. And sightlines are often quoted at Goodison Park with over sixty-one percent of seats being affected by obstructions. But what is less appreciated is how Goodison Park falls short on other amenities, particularly when it comes to inclusive design requirements. Adapting the Grand Old Lady is a huge issue for the club and often means a reduction in capacity. All the while, demand for seats continues to outstrip availability. And the new stadium is central to the club's ambition to compete at top and national and European game level. Taken into consideration all of the constraints, it is not feasible to either partly or totally redevelop Goodison Park. As tested and concluded by the previous planning inspector into our Kirby proposals, the club has always been clear that had it been feasible to stay as or near to the current site, we would have done so. At this point, I'd like to hand over to you. You'll continue the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. And good morning, everybody. We have undertaken an extensive alternative site assessment. It's worth stating firstly that the club wishes to stay in North Liverpool, is supported by all parties. Historic England accepts the club's desire to remain in North Liverpool. And over eighty-six percent of our responses to our public consultation wants Everton Football Club to remain in North Liverpool. Now, we have worked with the City Council and Historic England extensively throughout this process. And as part of the alternative site assessment, we agreed a citywide, effectively a citywide catchment boundary for the exercise. Our approach was extensive and robust, stretching to nearly seven hundred pages on this assessment alone and has been verified by two of the country's leading QCs, including your own. Fifty-two sites were identified. Now, half of those are public parks and green spaces. The other half are in private ownership, not available or requiring complex site assembly of viable businesses or homes. So all sites have been appraised in terms of their size, accessibility, planning and environmental considerations, ownership, availability and viability. And planning on each of the sites has been tested according to case law from other precedents. These sites have to be feasible, practical and realistic. This is a real-world exercise. We can conclude that Bramley-Moore Dock is the only site and there is no other alternative. So as we turn to design. The design brief was to create an iconic civic building with an accessible, open-to-all civic space which captures the historic maritime use of the site. We took our references from the conservation area at Stanley Dock. We particularly focused on the form of the brick warehouses in the conservation area, the height, the scale, to create a stadium that was synonymous with the city's docks. And this was also an exercise about engagement, design evolution through engagement. It was important to us, as you've heard, that this was a building for the city of Liverpool as well as the fans. We have engaged, we have listened, we have responded. Thousands of hours of events with fans, residents, businesses, stakeholders, both local and national. Over thirty design meetings with Historic England and the City Council. We have presented to the Historic England Advisory Committee twice and we have presented to two independent design review panels. Now, we have a better design for it. We have a more sustainable building because of it. And we have a far more inclusive stadium for the efforts that we've gone through. Bramley-Moore Dock will be the most accessible and inclusive and sustainable stadium in the Premier League. A far different situation to what we faced at Goodison, as you've heard from Colin. Waterfront connections and the choice of materiality are really important planning considerations. We have gone above and beyond in maintaining the physical water linkages between Hartley's docks, creating a new Western Plaza terrace looking out to the Mersey, designed as you surely could appreciate with a nod to Cannon Dock. Work of the City Council and Historic England, we have taken great care in approach and the choice of materials. The Archibald Leach Trust design comes through the brickwork, which gives the stadium, I hope you can appreciate that solid dock warehouse feel. And the landscape masterplan has evolved with the architecture. Important here on this slide to note the north-south orientation. That was deliberate in order to minimise impact on the grade-two listed wet dock walls. Colin will come back shortly and talk about how the infill and mitigation solution works part of the construction programme. Well, the landscape masterplan seeks to promote first and foremost the civic features of the site. Greater space, greater interest, greater dwell time on matchdays and non-matchdays and retaining and reusing many of the heritage artefacts and bringing back into productive use the hydraulic tower that is currently on site. I'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. And what we've achieved as a collective is a truly iconic world-class design for a world-class waterfront. The East Plaza here really shows that commitment to a public and civic space with a restored hydraulic tower emphasising viable heritage-led regeneration and the club's legal commitment to restore and open the hydraulic tower prior to the first game being played at Bramley-Moore Dock. On the south concourse, again, you see the importance of those historic maritime artefacts maintained with a high quality public realm, the railway tracks, bollards, new planting, all to create a place that people can come to regardless of whether there's a match on or not. The west terrace and the west plaza, as I mentioned, we've retained that water channel which that image shows there, which gives us that visual connectivity of the dock system. There's the new public civic space with the west terrace, as I mentioned, and the views across the Mersey. And if you're starting from here or ending in here, this will be a key milestone in the city's aspiration for a river walk. And this image is quite powerful in its own right. You see still the expanse of water still. You see the interconnectivity between the docks. You see the Royal Blue Mersey. Also importantly, you see the industrial hinterland that the stadium is placed in. And again, another important image looking south towards the city centre. This is a helpful slide to really understand the massing of the stadium in its current, in its location, proposed location of Bramley-Moore Dock. This is not out of keeping, I hope you would agree, with the cityscape. The height of the stadium has been reduced through that design, through the design evolution and is now in keeping totally with the mid-rise heights of accepted policy guidance. This is a truly iconic structure on the banks of the River Mersey. As a footnote, Bramley-Moore Dock will be the largest commercial or civic construction project let over the last five years. Only the House of Commons Northern Estate refurbishment is actually larger. We have gone to great lengths in respecting heritage and the World Heritage status of the site. Members will be aware that the northern docks is one of six areas which make up the World Heritage Site. And you will know it's actually common ground between the football club, between Historic England, between the City Council on the level of heritage arm that the stadium proposal suggests. Members will also aware that national and local planning policy is permissive of development in sensitive heritage locations. And the purpose of these next slides here is just to highlight the lengths that we have gone to in not only respecting the city's heritage, but in investing in it also. Bramley-Moore Dock opened in eighteen forty-eight as part of that rapid expansion of Liverpool's docks under Jesse Harley. To paint the full picture, by eighteen fifty, the growth of Liverpool's imports and exports started to slow down. International competition, domestic competition and the growth of steam-powered ships requiring even wider and deeper docks made a step change in what was to be built at the time. But let's also not forget the people-centric story of this time as one of mass population expansion. Poverty and casual employment felt worse in this location along the docks. Bramley-Moore Dock was actually used in the end for the storage of coal to support the dock system. This was its function. I don't need to perhaps underline the fact that this at the time was a harsh, very hard life. But to the present day, right now Bramley-Moore Dock, like most of the northern docks, is predominantly vacant, derelict and getting worse. Right now Bramley-Moore Dock, like the northern docks, is not accessible to the general public. And right now, the baseline for the implementation of Liverpool Water Scheme in the northern neighbourhood is twenty years in the future for a residential scheme. The buildup of the next slide really shows the extent to which we've audited the assets on site. The first slide here really shows the position of the listed structures on site. The second slide shows the reclamation and reuse of the historic sets on site. This slide shows the retention of historic rail tracks on site as part of that south concourse, that eastern plaza. These next two slides show the retained historic assets in situ, marked by the coloured dots. And also the retained historic assets that will be relocated onto the site. And these next two slides bring together the whole picture. This first one shows where all of those assets are featured on site. Over, well, almost eighty percent of all assets will be repurposed and reused. And the remainder unfortunately are so badly damaged to be not capable of reuse, but we are committed to finding a creative solution to those assets in their own regard. And this slide really does show that our designs have baked in the heritage and maritime assets of Bramley-Moore Dock, of the northern docks, of the conservation area into our design. It's what gives our design the character that we can all be proud of. And the hydraulic engine tower to finish, currently on Historic England's at-risk register. You can see by the images there just what a state it is in. And there is at the moment no current plan to preserve the asset in the short to medium term. Now, the aspiration we have is to create a cultural and heritage centre linked to the social history of the docks, Everton Football Club and to football in the city in general. There's some real people's stories to be told around football and the docks and we want this building to be the facility in which that is delivered. But before moving on, I think it is worth reminding that, as we said at the outset, it's not that we're just respecting heritage. It's actually we're investing in the city's heritage. And the club is committed to delivering fifty-five million pounds of privately funded investment in preserving the assets for the public and the world to benefit from, the assets that we've just gone through. Fifty-five million pounds. Ten million of that goes in land remediation. Mentioned before that this was used for storing coal. Thirty-five million pounds of that goes in the preservation of the heritage and culture on Bramley-Moore Dock. And ten million of that goes in the public infrastructures, which is surfacing and using some of those materials that we've described earlier. That's a significant, considerable investment in the city's heritage. Turning to sustainability, the People's Project has been measured in detail against each of the United Nations seventeen Sustainable Development Goals. The People's Project contributes to each and every one of these. The People's Project, as you've heard from Colin and Denise, is not just about bricks and mortar. It's about improvements, tangible improvements to the quality of life through the reductions in the inequalities and the creation of social and economic value. It's about improving health and wellbeing outcomes across North Liverpool. It's about the betterment of biodiversity net gain. It's about providing more facilities for the conditions to improve education and promotion of equality. And if we take just goal... And if we take just Goals Six, Seven, Twelve and Thirteen, which deal with environmental sustainability, the club is committed to create a sustainable, environmentally-friendly stadium. There are PV panels on the stadium roof, there's lighting and energy efficiency measures, there are water use minimisation features, there are electric vehicle charging points, there's battery storage, and we are looking at the potential for the seats within the stadium to be made using recycled material. We are absolutely committed to creating the most sustainable stadium in the Premier League. And turning to accessibility, and it's worth noting here that there is full agreement with City Council, with Sefton Council and with Mersey Travel on the stadium transport strategy. Our matchday transport plan is shown on this slide. First and foremost, this is about pedestrian and the public transport strategy. In terms of walking and cycling, we've mentioned the River Walk. This is a 20-minute walk into the, into the city centre. It's a, we have been providing for 100, over 150 cycle spaces. We have off-site, we have undertaken an off-site audit for paving and lighting in the vicinity of the stadium, and we are promoting a full-inclusive access strategy. Sandhill Station will be the public transport hub, offering Mersey Rail and National Connectivity. We're providing further investment to enhance Sandhills, new waiting areas external to the, to the station itself to manage crowd flows. Mersey Rail Marshals on a site managing station safety. And of course, as you know, Mersey Rail stations have park-and-ride facilities. Now, other public transport proposals will include matchday shuttle buses to Liverpool City Centre and to Bootle Town Centre, and also matchday shuttle buses for disabled supporters. We will have hard and soft road closures on matchdays outside the stadium. And on non-matchdays, it is worth reaffirming that we are proposing to provide a new North Shore bus circular between Sandhills, Bramley-Moore Dock, Thames Streets, Liverpool Waters and on to the city centre. And in terms of traffic and private vehicular management, we want to minimise car journeys to the stadium. Restricting parking on site to just less than 160 bays. Restricting parking off-site and a commitment to substantially expand the football parking management zones to prevent fly parking on surrounding streets, whether they be residential or close to the stadium industrial. Hard road closures, as I mentioned, will be in place in pre and post-match periods for public safety. Now I'll hand back to Colin to talk me through the delivery of the stadium.
Thank you, Ian. So, delivery and operations. To date, the club has committed and invested over £39 million on the project. Funding is on track with a mix of equity, senior debt and junior debt being considered. And the funding will only crystallise once a project achieves satisfactory conclusion of all outstanding matters and including the planning application approval. We've been working in partnership with our preferred contractor and their appointed design team. And throughout the REVA Stage Three and Four design process, we've continued with stakeholder engagement and as a consequence incorporated positive criticisms that has improved the look feel of the stadium. Ensuring our proposal is a fully compliant design as submitted in September of last year. A significant amount of work has continued behind the scenes, and with our experienced competency on contractor longer work, with the design team, are ready and capable of delivering this scheme once approved. The scheme proposals include a social value delivery plan that will address apprenticeships, local employment, training and upskilling, work experience, local sourcing of materials, interaction with local community businesses, in particular SMEs, and supporting local and social enterprises. Next slide please. Our estimated build time of three years includes a methodology that takes into consideration the impact of contractor parking, transport, noise and dust on the local area and residents during construction. The method also maximises off-site manufacturing. This in turn will reduce the impact of transport and emissions of pollution, along with just the general nuisance. An enormous amount of upfront work to record and plan how heritage assets are protected and reused has taken place. Environmental assessments completed and mitigation measures have been agreed with all statutory stakeholders. And within the Phase One, we intend to establish habitat for seabirds such as cormorant rafts in the adjacent dock and water bodies. Erect stabilisation structures to support and protect the hydraulic tower structure. As Ian has already mentioned, it is on the endangered list. We'll safely remove all fish from the dock, repair the dock walls before infilling them with sand. And we'll construct a northern isolation structure to send in half-tide dock channel entrance. But all before we sensitively infill the dock with half a million tonnes of sand which is harvested from the River Mersey estuary, which is the most environmental and sustainable manner in which to import material. The methodology has been devised, allowing the option to, if required, reverse the construction process, allowing the dock to be returned to its original state. Next slide please. This slide depicts the substructures including piling. Again, protection of the heritage assets and the environment during construction is of paramount importance to us. Our piling design avoids the dock walls, therefore preventing any damage to the protected assets. All temporary roadways are raised by approximately one metre and controls apathic construction traffic on site, again protecting any surface heritage assets. Next slide. Thank you. Stage Three is the superstructure and concrete works. We intend to minimise the amount of in situ superstructure concrete works for the East and West stands. This will reduce the impact of adverse weather on the programme. It will reduce the health and safety risks presented to operatives, and it will also minimise transport of raw materials to site. Thank you. The steelwork and precast terracing. Through careful and precise planning, we intend to coordinate operating cranes inside the limited logistics area within the bowl. In order to do this, we'll utilise a just-in-time delivery model. This will also prevent construction traffic congestion outside of the site. Next slide please. The roof steelwork, the structure has been designed to emulate the dockland's heavy industrial engineering elements. It's also been designed in such a way that all temporary states during erection have been considered. Stage Six. This image shows the roof design including mesh cladding to the barrel. And again, the materials have been selected to withstand the harsh environment conditions of the site. The roofing system has been designed in a cassette form, again reducing the risk to operatives working at height. And it's worth noting that we have approximately 2,500 metres squared of photovoltaic panels with an opportunity to increase this. Next slide, thank you. The facade manufacturing and installation. The design has been rationalised, taken on board constructive comments from stakeholders. It will utilise modern and innovative construction methodologies, incorporating structural panelised systems. The benefits of this approach include build efficiency, reduction in waste and improved quality. Considerable amounts of engagement with Historic England and other stakeholders took place to agree the system suitability. Again, this methodology has less of an impact on the environment, delivering raw materials to site, improving health and safety measures, and will train engineers of the future in off-site manufacturing products, processes and installations. Next slide please. So this is quite a busy slide unfortunately, but this depicts the MEP and fit-out work stream. Naturally, installation will be implemented as soon as the areas become watertight. Once again, the installation will be modularised where possible. And we have included within the design proposals for battery storage fed directly from the PV panels located on the roof that can feed back either into the national grid or alternatively supply essential services, small power and lighting within the stadium, minimising the need for standby generators and thus reducing our carbon footprint. Next slide please. There's not really much to say about pitch construction. Obviously, this can only take place once the logistics area in the bowl has been vacated and made available, but it does give a real indicator that we are meeting our key dates within the programme. Western Water Channel and Step Promenade. Again, the Step Promenade was introduced following discussions with stakeholders to capitalise on the river views and enhance the civic amenity on the western elevation. The connecting water channel is to be created at the very last moment due to logistics areas requirements. And we'll be introducing diverse habitats within the water body once complete. Next slide. Next slide please, Ian. The external works are probably the last physical works to take place on site. And as described earlier by Ian, the materials selected and heritage assets retained at the start of the project will be introduced as a functional element of the landscape, maximising their exposure to the public within the west and east public realms. And the last slide. And finally, testing and commissioning. Once complete, we move into a fully operational stadium. Consideration has been given to lighting schemes which will be sensitive to the local area and will be subject to curfew so as not to impact the local community. Matchday and major event day curfews will again reduce the impact on local residents and businesses. And a waste management strategy both during and immediately following a match or events will make sure that waste is removed efficiently and effectively. Dock and river edge protection fences have been designed to prevent litter entering into the water bodies. And finally, Zone X, crowd management and strategies have been agreed in partnership with the emergency services and local authority. This will extend to Sandhill Station, Corral and Garia, the fan plazas. We've also carried out extensive CFD pedestrian modelling to ensure safe access and egress into the stadium and local roadways. The traffic management and stewarding process will be implemented to the wider area, and this has been agreed by other stakeholders, as Ian has already mentioned. And finally, at Everton, we have existing knowledge and experience of these operations, going from Goodison Park, and we work closely with the statutory bodies to ensure that this is concluded properly. Thank you. Ian?
Thank you, Colonel. Now, the benefits case is multifaceted. We've covered many of these benefits already through the presentation, whether they relate to design, to heritage, to construction, or indeed the United Nations Sustainable Development Benefits. But what we have on this slide are the quantifiable benefits following a tried and trusted methodology in HM Treasury's Green Book for Economic and Social Value Impact Assessments. But I want to address head-on that hypothetical argument that another site would deliver these same benefits. It would not. Why? The benefits are tied to the location and the design of the scheme. In location terms, the wider catalytic benefits that the stadium location will bring will be felt literally across the road, in the wider Thames Streets and in the northern neighbourhoods of the Liverpool Waters Scheme. As your committee report highlights, there are over 3,500 jobs assumed in the construction stage and over 2,000 jobs in the operational stage, assumed in the immediate vicinity of the stadium. Now, these are non-stadium and non-Goodison Park legacy jobs. This is why this is a regeneration opportunity. It comes on the back of the club's decision to locate footballing operations to Bramley-Moore Dock and to stay in North Liverpool. There is simply no other site within the 52 that would be able to deliver such catalytic public benefits. And in design terms, this, as you've seen, is a stadium that's been designed for the particular circumstances of Bramley-Moore Dock. A hypothetical alternative site would have an entirely different design and therefore cost model. And it therefore stands to reason manifestly and methodologically that this would not generate the quantifiable benefits shown on this slide and contained in your committee report. And turning to the benefits of the People's Project which is shown on this slide. The overall project delivers more than 15,000 jobs to the city region economy, over a 1.3 billion boost to the local economy. Almost 385 million of social value to the city of Liverpool, addressing those issues, those welfare issues that would otherwise be the responsibility of the council, of local health services or other social services. 1.4 million visitors to the city will come on the back of the People's Project being implemented. Many of those, I'm sure, will undoubtedly be leaving with the positive impression that the city of Liverpool does indeed know how to do heritage-led regeneration. This stadium will be a showcase to the world, even if you are not one of those viewers of the most-watched sports league in the world. If you are one of the 1 billion viewers that tune in every week to watch the Premier League, then this stadium will become very well-known very quickly. And finally, to reference the overwhelming support that this project has. It has almost universal support from stakeholders and members of the public. We've undertaken one of the city's largest ever public consultation events with over 63,000 respondents. These are fans and non-fans, Everton fans and Liverpool fans, representative of the city in terms of diversity of the demographic. We've received, as has been mentioned, wide acclaim locally and nationally for our inclusive approach and the innovative techniques that we've used to generate these sorts of results and to get the support for this project. The weight of support coming through your own consultation mirrors our own. 94% agreed Bramley-Moore Dock was an appropriate site. 95% of respondents supported the proposals at Goodison Park. 98% supported the proposed stadium design at Bramley-Moore Dock. 96% supported the reuse of historic assets on site. 96% support was achieved to the People's Project proposals. And finally, in conclusion, this is a unique opportunity for North Liverpool, the city and the city region. There is a clear established need for the club to move, and there is clearly no alternative site. The abandonment of L4 has never been an option. Investing in the heritage of the city, as you've seen, we have gone to great lengths. We have gone to great lengths to create an iconic design that will be a showcase across the world. This will be the most sustainable, accessible and inclusive new stadium in the Premier League. There are overwhelming public benefits that outweigh any harm to heritage assets. And finally, there is overwhelming public and stakeholder support both locally and nationally. Thank you.
Chair, I wondered, would you like us to pause for questions now on the Bramley-Moore Dock application or continue with the Goodison Park?
I do, Chair, now. We're going to do Goodison Park after this application separately. I'm just concerned, Denise, that I had so many speakers listed, and I think we've only had from three. You know, people like John McGovern, Lloyd Baker, have all these people listed. Do they not wish to speak, just for me to be clear? Have all these people listed, do they not wish to speak, just for me to be clear?
Sure. But project consultants who we've brought in, just in case they had any technical questions, they won't need to speak unless a question is directed to them.
I don't want to be leaving anybody out. councillor Crohn, who's going to come in after this. So I now have a question from councillor Steve Radford and then I'll take Sarah Doyle. Steve?
Thank you, Chair. Can I say in introducing my question that I came to this debate totally open-minded? I'm probably one of the few councillors in the city who's profoundly disinterested in football, totally. I prefer rugby. I have to say, I've been absolutely impressed by the presentation. Before I came to the meeting and looked at the presentation, the reservation I had is, as you know, I opposed LFC building on Stanley Park. And one of the problems we have in our community is still people getting to the site and the lack of investment in infrastructure. I was wondering, certainly would be quite keen to hear about the investment into Sandhill Station. How, what's the balance of methodology do the applicants believe will people, the 56,000, will get to the venue and what sort of catchment area they are? I think, you know, being candid, this was really welcome to hear that you've got a club investing in the public infrastructure, the transport, which is, I think, the only reservation I would have had coming to this meeting afresh.
Thank you, Stephen. I'd like you to answer that question on transport infrastructure before we take the next question, please. Denise, can you sort that out?
Yes. Chair, I'd like to invite Kevin Blake in from Macdonald's, then our transport consultants. They'll be able to give you the detail in relation to that question.
Thank you. So Kevin, would you like to come in now, please?
Dialogue with Mersey Travel, Liverpool City Council, as well as bus and taxi operators has been a massive part of the work that we've been doing and support the transport strategy for this planning application. And in terms of Sandhills, we want that station to operate as safely and as efficiently as possible on match day, given the amount of demand that will be there. So the construction of a waiting facility and also stewarding on match day is a large part of the match day strategy for that station. And in addition to that, in dialogue with bus operators, the club has negotiated that shuttle bus services will be provided to the city centre, which will also serve city centre train stations, car parks, to allow the city centre to become a transport hub on match days. Shuttle buses will also go into Brutal Town Centre, again to spread the transport demand and to allow Brutal to become another match day public transport hub. In addition to that, there will be a regular bus service which will service the site on non-match days, which will allow much better and sustainable transport accessibility to the site. In addition, there will be new taxi ranks close to the site and also substantial cycle parking provision within the stadium, which is something that is a part of that.
Thank you. Steve, can I ask you a question?
Thank you. Very impressed, I have to say. Very encouraged.
Okay. So can I hand over to Sarah Doyle now for her question? And then I'll follow that up with Tony Conception and Merta Juarez.
Thank you, Chair. I've just got a question on the figures the applicants have provided. And I do note that it is a very in-depth consultation and I'm glad that the applicants did go to that length. So I just wanted some more detail. So it says that there were 63,000 responses. 4,600 were non-football fans. And I just wanted to know if the non-football fans, are there any percentages of the non-football fans that were in support? Do we have percentages for that? And then also, that says on page 20, and I was looking for more information on the L4 postcode and the percentages in support, not support from there. On page 494 that we received, it said specifically from responding in the L4 postcode. And I was just wondering if there was any figures or percentages on what was the breakdown of support in the L4 postcode. Thank you.
Thank you. So Steve, could you introduce somebody to answer the question about the public consultation? But it's three parts.
Okay, can I just invite Mo to give the answer, please, to help with the answer?
Yes, no problem. Thanks for the question, Sarah. Sarah, do you just want to talk me through each one specifically? So just to start off with the North Liverpool one, what was the specific breakdown that you asked for?
Yeah, so it says that 96% of respondents in favour. It said there were 63,000 responses. Of those responses, 4,600 were non-football fans. And I wanted to know of the non-football fans, what percent were in support? And then the second one was, it said that specifically from respondents in the L4 postcode, that's all I could see. I don't think my colleagues could see anything else. Specifically from respondents in the L4 postcode. And I just wanted to see if you had any percent of who, the amount of people that lived in the L4 postcode or even in Liverpool that responded. Because my only concern is that there was a lot of responses from fans who maybe did not live in Liverpool itself, but I know Everton has a wide fan base. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you very much. So specifically around the, around the kind of non-football fans question. So however you cut the data, the figures were over 80% support overall. So if you cut that data around non-Liverpool fans, if you cut that data around residents that live around L4 or specifically around Kirkdale specifically, they all achieved over 80%. Specifically around kind of residents in L4, it was 87% kind of support overall. So from a statistical perspective, no matter how the data was cut, we were able to get a real kind of insight into the level of feeling and hence why we were able to kind of talk about the overwhelming support. For people living outside of the city region, that wasn't as high as you may think. So overall, it was about 20% that came from outside of the city region. So as you can appreciate, we carried out a very, very public consultation. So we visited many areas across the city region and held. I think when you combine both public consultations, it was just under 40 kind of public consultation events in very public areas. So there would naturally be some flow-through traffic of people that wouldn't be from the city region specifically in and around Liverpool. But we actually found that to be a real benefit, to be honest, and to be getting some real insight from people that may be armed from the city, who have got a different kind of viewpoint around the city that can give us an insight around maybe what was happening around their own areas or specifically within their own football clubs, which was really insightful and provided some good feedback for us. So from that perspective, as I say, no matter how the data was cut, no matter where people had lived, the support that we had for this stadium kind of was over 80%. And you can break that down into loads of different quantities. And if it's something you're potentially interested in, then I'd be more than happy to send the data over to you.
Can I just ask if Ian was ready?
Just to reaffirm most points really, in the first stage of public consultation, 10% of the respondents identified themselves as being either non-football fans or followers of clubs other than Everton. In the second stage of public consultation, 7%, which is 2,726 respondents, identified themselves as being either non-football fans or followers of clubs other than Everton. And as Mo has said, a lot of the respondents are skewed towards the city of Liverpool and in particular, North Liverpool. We can get the L4 figures, it's just we don't have them in front of us.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you to the applicants and thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. They did ask if you wanted the figures sent over later. Obviously, it wouldn't be able to be taken into account in your decision today, but would you accept that?
Yes, but I think I am satisfied with the response.
Yes, so if you would send them across, please, it would be useful and Sarah can then share it with us if need be. It's useful for us if we're asked to comment after we've made our decision. So I come on next to Tony Conception. Then I also have Helen Thompson, Joe Hudson waiting as well, away you are in the queue. Tony?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just say that, yeah, I thank Everton really for the presentation. I thought that was really clear and really comprehensive. And I particularly like the commitment to provide local jobs and apprenticeships. In that context, I was just wondering whether or not Everton would encourage the contractor to sign up to the construction charter for the Liverpool City Council, which outlines the minimum standards for work on any construction site within the city limits. I'd just like to ask them, would they encourage the contractor to sign up to that charter?
I think that's a fairly straightforward question.
It is.
I don't know if I should answer it.
Colin's going to.
The answer to your question is, we would encourage the contractor and any contractor to sign up to the charter. However, we can't contractually insist on that obligation. What we have committed to though is our section 106 and 278 commitments, which will facilitate apprenticeships training. It will be one of, or probably one of the most important key aspects of the project delivery will be to ensure that we don't use umbrella companies and that there is direct employment will be maximised within the construction contract.
Tony, are you happy with that answer or reasonable?
Yes, Chair. I mean, I welcome the response really. And I do know that Everton really have got a long track record of working within the community. So hopefully, you know, their influence will be very beneficial, making sure that the contractor signs up to that charter. So thank you for the response.
So I think we can say that planning committee, if you have your great reputation at Everton Football Club, that you'll do all you can to get your contractors to respect that charter. And I'm going to move on now to Merta Juarez. Merta, would you like to come in now with your question?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Sorry, I had a problem with my mic. The presentation is, I found it quite interesting and also, you know, the plans are evident that, you know, our city is culturally embedded in the docks, it's culturally embedded in football. And, you know, it's a great reputation we have and these plans, I believe, will enhance that football experience. And I think it's going to be a great asset for our reputation internationally that we have two great clubs and now Everton are going to move and they're going to move to a better location. But anyway, my question is regarding coach parking for, you know, coach parking for fans that are coming from other cities. What arrangements are going to be made around the area for coaches to be able to park up? Also, regarding jobs, similar question to councillor Conception before. You know, I would like to see Liverpool people benefit from the construction jobs and also how many jobs are going to be created from? I see that there's going to be plans, you know, the facilities will be able to use for conferences, exhibitions. There's going to be weddings, funerals, shops and a few more services around. How many jobs do Everton think it will bring to the area?
Chair, if I could invite Kevin to discuss the coach parking question initially and then I'll ask Ian to address the employment and local jobs questions secondly.
So I think we have information about where the coach parking will be, but I think councillor Juarez is probably concerned about would it be enough? What sort of volume are we able to cater for, Kevin? Over to you.
Yes, the transport strategy currently accommodates up to 70 coaches, which is significantly more than the current demand for coach travel at Goodison Park. And coaches will be parked on some of the closed streets which surround the stadium. So with 70, we are comfortable that we will accommodate the predicted demand plus more for those special events when there will be more than usual away fans, FA Cup fixtures.
I would carry over.
Okay, thank you. In terms of jobs, the penultimate slide that we presented talks about more than 15,000 jobs being created. That's across the People's Project, that's Bramley-Moore Dock Stadium, that's Goodison Legacy and that is the catalytic benefits that we're expecting to see as part of the new stadium development in the northern docks of Liverpool Waters and across the road. So that's 15,000 jobs for the city region as a whole. Those are model jobs following the Manchester Treasury's best practice guide through the Green Book. But as already been alluded to, there is a firm commitment and you'd expect this from Everton and Everton in the community to make sure those jobs are felt locally throughout the lifetime of this programme.
I think, Chair, as well, we have a fantastic, we refer to us the People's Club because of the very unique and special bond we have with our community. We're very proud of that. We hope to share more details with you on the Goodison Legacy project, but it certainly will be part of our strategic plan to ensure these jobs are felt locally, our young people are developed and that we open up avenues to employability that are not possible at Goodison Park at the moment because we don't have conferences and facilities. We are limited on hospitality. We want to bring these apprenticeships through the construction but also into the employment post-construction. So you have our guarantee that we will be certainly ensuring that we look exceptionally favourably on how we appoint and recruit and that we will also be putting the suitable pressure on the people who work alongside us on this project.
I think that fully answers your question, councillor Juarez, wouldn't you say?
Yes, Chair. I'm quite happy with that. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I think it was Joe Hudson who put his hand up before Helen. I'm sorry if I got it the wrong way round, but Joe, you next and then Helen. You need to unmute, Joe. You need to unmute.
I apologize. She busy putting microphone on. Firstly, I'd just like to comment on the consultation exercise that Everton have done, which has been absolutely incredible and certainly for the people I represent. There's been more comment made in relation to the consultation and I think the view is that, you know, Everton are the People's Club. I'm a red, by the way, but Everton are the People's Club. And the care and attention that Everton have gone through to that exercise, so that's well pleased and well received by the people I represent. Sarah, in relation to L4, I represent people living in L4, L5 and L20. About 90% of those are L4, but L4 goes back into county further out, into club more all around those areas. But you're sort of from a Kirkdale perspective, until last night, when I received an email, I had not one person who I represent and I've spoke to saying that they did not support the Everton project. And the email last night, I don't even know where that person come from. So in terms of the L4, obviously we've got concerns because it's a new venture for us in terms of what the match day traffic and all that kind of stuff brings. But we will deal with them, both with the club and the City Council. The second question I've got, Denise, I know the acting mayor met with you a couple of weeks ago in relation to Everton and the progress and the question was asked in relation to the trade unions. Obviously, with a project this size, the rumor mill churns away and churns away and churns away. Could I ask or could I request that? Could I ask or could I request that yourself or your nominees meet with Unite and the GMB as soon as possible and to explore the mutual benefits we, you go to trade unions and yourselves and Langoroe can derive from, from that, those discussions. Certainly, in, in recent times, the, the work that the trade unions have done with businesses within the city has been excellent. They've got good relationships with the education service and the community college and all that kind of stuff. So I, I'd just ask that, that, that can be arranged as, as soon as possible. If, of course, you're agreeable to that too, actors to go between for that. I'll finish on that point, Chair.
Councillor Hanson, absolutely. I'm happy to both share the communication that I issued to the acting following our meeting. I'm happy to share that with yourself or any of the colleagues after the meeting. And we're certainly, you know, very comfortable about meeting with the unions and ensuring that we have all parties around the table as soon as possible. So thank you very much for that suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise.
Good answer. But we would, we hope that, you know, inspire consideration of whether to grant or refuse. But it's really good that Everton are making themselves very open to all these points so that they are the People's Project. So Helen, it's over to you next, and then Malcolm's got the question.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Everton for your presentation. I have to say, I really welcome your commitment to local jobs and to apprenticeships and also your willingness to, to work closely with the trade unions. So that's fantastic. And I've got a couple of questions about the channel of water that will, that you're planning to retain relating to both the environment and also from a heritage point of view. You talked about reintroducing diverse species in there. I wondered, and I know it's already closed off, being Bramley-Moore Dock and Nelson Dock. And my understanding is it will be closed off to vehicles in the, yeah, to vehicles, to ships and things in the other direction. Will it, will the water still be able to flow through the docks? Or will it be completely closed off? And then I also had a question about whether, at some point in the future, if somebody decided that that needed to be navigable all the way up from the southern docks to the northern docks, whether those blockages could be opened up again? Thank you.
So this is a question about biodiversity and the water flow, which, some of which may be better addressed for the person who's dealing with the whole project of Liverpool Waters. But if you could do what you can to answer that question, please.
Okay, okay, Colin.
Yeah, to answer the question over the navigable water channel, I think it's fair to say that whilst there is always an opportunity to remove isolation structures, we are actually the very last dock on the dock system. And there are a number of existing obstructions throughout the central and southern dock system that would prevent that occurring. Having said that, the water channel will have an impact and influence on the quality of the water within the dock system. I think it's probably fair to say that we've recorded with surveys over the last 18 months the water levels and the water qualities in both Hartide Nelson Dock, Bramley-Moore Dock and also in, in the adjacent water bodies to the south. And we recognise that the water channel is an important aspect of that whole dock system. Although we do recognise that water doesn't necessarily flow from this, from the northern docks to the southern docks, it tends to, to flow the other, in the other direction. And therefore, the existing southern isolation structure is already managing the flow of that water within the system. With regards to biodiversity, we are conscious that we are removing a substantial water body. And we also have a commitment to a biodiversity offset with Liverpool City Council, which we, we will obviously, I suppose, develop in detail once the alternative sites for biodiversity offsets have been identified. But there is a commitment to, to try and encourage habitat and, you know, obviously, local species back into that system.
Thank you.
So can I now invite councillor Malcolm Kennedy?
Thank you. Thank you Everton for the, the presentation, which was extremely impressive. Mine's just a very simple question and it's about the stadium being very near water with a lot of people coming on, on the site. And what thought has been taken, if necessary, into the safety of those fans?
A question for you about water.
Yeah, I'll take that question as well again, councillors. The, we've carried out extensive computer fluid dynamic modelling of both the wind in the location that we proposed to build. We recognise it is a windy environment and there are a number of wind mitigation measures which are included within the design that's been presented to you. Naturally, we'd like to try and minimise these through design development. But as it stands, the safety of spectators have been accommodated with these wind mitigation measures. The most notable one actually is the Western Terrace, which faces the River Mersey. There is an undercrofted, I know that designers don't like me using that word, but effectively there's a protected undercroft on that location, which is the most adversely affected by the weather. With regards to water and flooding, we actually increase the, the land height, if you want to call it that, by over a metre to prevent any flooding within that local area. So the stadium itself effectively would become an island on the waterfront in North Liverpool.
Well, just possibly a little bit more. Football fans can become quite excitable at times. And it, it's just about how, how near fans are actually getting to very deep water. And in, in the exceptional circumstance, I'm sure it would be an exceptional circumstance where there might be difficulties with crowds.
Yes, councillor, the, the water bodies are protected by two-metre-high fences, which will be sensitively designed to, you know, to look and feel as if they are part of that document environment. And again, we have an evacuation plan in place, albeit in draft form. And that will be developed as the design detail is developed also. We're working close, I suppose, collaboration with, with the emergency services. And again, the emergency plans have been viewed by certainly the police, fire and ambulance with regards to suitability for the site.
Okay, thank you for that, Alex, because I don't think we knew about your evacuation plan despite the very extensive notes. So councillor Barrett now has a question. Billy, would you like to come in?
Yeah, and thank you to Everton for a very comprehensive and detailed presentation. Very good. Just a quick question. I've got a couple of friends who are Evertonians who are disabled. And they come in by public transport. They're slightly worried of the, how are you going to cope with disabled supporters using public transport and then getting to the ground?
Yes, so what do you like to put in there?
I'll ask Alex.
Give us a bit more detail, please.
Yeah, I'll ask Alex to answer that question.
No problem. So we've had quite detailed consultations, both with our own disabled supporters group and with Liverpool City Council Corporate Access Forum and the general public during the consultation as well on these points. As part of the transport management plan, we've actually got a shuttle bus service that we're proposing is managed by the club that will be able to pick supporters up on a pre-book basis from Sandhill Station and get them as close to the ground as possible before the Harrow Road closures are in place. That will be right outside the Regent Road wall.
Sorry, Alex, will I be able to put people in wheelchairs as well?
Yes, so the vehicle would be suitable for anybody who's in any kind of chair that needs to be come on board that as well. On top of the shuttle bus to Sandhill Station, we also have the opportunity for an off-site parking facility and a park-and-ride type option. We're currently looking at Stanley Park, but that's yet to be determined. Where people could also be able to park the car, get that shuttle bus and get as close to the ground as possible as well. Because we recognise that public transport isn't suitable for everybody with accessibility needs.
Thank you, Chair.
I just thought so, as well, there's a process, I think there were concerns about that. That seems to conclude the questions I have for the Goodison Football Club presenters from our councillors. I now wish to invite councillor Tom Crohn to speak to the planning committee. If you're there, councillor Crohn.
Hi, Chair. Hello, thank you, Chair. Yeah. Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you Everton for your presentation. I've got a, a number of comments to make about the, about the planning application. But first, I do want to just acknowledge that it really is an extremely significant project which offers potential economic benefits to the city. I think it can help catalyse regeneration in the north of the city and help one of our clubs achieve its sporting ambitions. It will, however, have potentially harmful impacts on local ecology and its long-term contribution to Liverpool's greenhouse gases. I do appreciate that efforts have been made to take these issues into consideration. But given Liverpool's recent commitment to reaching net zero emissions by 2030, mitigations need to be dramatically more ambitious and forward-thinking. So I'm going to be calling for a number of planning conditions to be strengthened to help make this development a real exemplar of large-scale development in a time of ecological emergency. So I've got some comments broadly on the themes of energy and transport and ecology. So just starting with energy and transport, just to again acknowledge that there are a number of positive measures noted in the application and there is a fairly robust transport plan and I want to acknowledge that. And also, and also in terms of energy, the solar array that's going to be installed is a great addition. And there's also talk of a possible district heat network, which could be a low-carbon heating option. However, it looks as though the district heating system is dependent on the network being developed by others. So I'd just like to know what heating system is going to be installed in the interim. I'm also pleased to see serious consideration being given to encouraging staff and visitors to use sustainable transport. However, to reflect the need for a rapid and significant reduction in the use of private motor vehicles, I do think even more needs to be done. It's good that plans to have a multi-storey car park have gone so that match day parking is reduced from 481 to 85 spaces. And I'm pleased to see that 52 of these spaces are going to be accessible and two will include electric car charging. But I'd like to see the parking improved and a strengthened condition added here to increase the number of electric charging points, preferably to 100% of parking spaces. Because if we're going to get to net zero, this means almost no diesel or petrol vehicles on the road. So we may as well have the right infrastructure in place from the very beginning. There are 152 bike parking spaces that are specified. Last time I cycled to a game at Goodison Park, I couldn't actually find a bike parking space. So this is a, a real improvement, but I don't think it's enough. I'd like to see, you know, there are thousands of fans living within an easy cycling distance from the stadium. So I'd like to see something like they have at Central Station in Amsterdam, where they've got a multi-storey bike parking facility, which can accommodate thousands of bikes. And I do think the cycle parking needs to be linked to wide, safe, segregated cycle lanes. And these need to be linked into the existing cycle network in the system, in the city. I think Everton should contribute via section 106 or something similar to making parts of the hopefully soon-to-appear pop-up cycle lane network permanent and then linking these to the stadium. I'd like to see a specific condition calling for that. And I think there should be a pedestrian highway between the stadium and Sandhill's train station. I think this route needs to be safe, accessible and made as attractive as possible by the installation of green infrastructure. And now just a few quick comments on ecology. I know that, that there are details about this within the planning application, but I do think there, there's areas where it could be improved. So obviously, it's inevitable that a disused dock area is going to attract bird, mammal and other forms of life, which the redevelopment is going to disturb. So we need reassurance that sufficient efforts are being made to keep populations for species like bats going and the adequate effort is being made to build space and opportunity for nature in the plans. The water feature that will be to the west of the development looks like it's just going to be an architectural device to keep the development in harmony with the Victorian dock design. I propose that this waterway should be wildlife-friendly. For example, by the installation of rafts for seabirds to utilise a nest. And I'd like a specific planning condition to, to this effect. I do appreciate that there are several mitigation measures listed. For example, you talk about floating pontoons in neighbouring docks, removing the plant and vegetation outside of bird breeding seasons and providing alternative bat roosts, among other things. These are all to be applauded, but I'd like to request more details of how the council will act to ensure these mitigations are thoroughly and constantly applied. And I'd also like to hear about some limit to the noise that's going to be created by the development because it can have a significant impact on bird and marine species. I didn't see that anywhere in the, in the planning application, so I'd like that to be added if possible. And finally, just in terms of the plans for tree planting and landscaping around the ground, these do look good as long as they are applied rigorously. I'd like to know a bit more detail about whether these plans imply there's going to be a lot of space managed to promote biodiversity, including appropriate mowing regimes, provision of nest boxes, bat boxes, et cetera. And will any green space linked to the development be linked into other wildlife corridors within the city? I really think it's important that biodiversity is considered as a part of any scheme on this scale. Sorry, they're my main comments. Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me, somebody is speaking. Can you turn your microphone off? It should be muted except for the person speaking. I wanted to say about councillor Crohn's comments that some of these need to be addressed by our case officer and our head of highways and also over the noise, I think, environmental health. So some of these will be addressed later, but I'd like to invite Everton Football Club, if they have got any comments, about numerous areas that have been brought up. Section 106 being inappropriate to this application, as I'm sure the case officer will turn, will point out to us. But about the ecology, about preserving what we have and enhancing biodiversity in the future. And also comments about pedestrian and bike access. So I'd like to invite anybody from Everton Football Club who would like to comment on those matters.
Chair, we'll ask Chris to answer those questions if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Chris, would you like to come in?
Yeah, good morning, committee. Just in terms of transport to start with, we have a planning condition already agreed, which requires us a future-proof parking provision to provide 100% EV. Clearly, no EV is going to grow electric vehicle ownership. So that is already future-proofed as a planning condition. Secondly, in relation to cycle provision, we have appropriate double-decker cycle parking facilities already proposed. And with the ability to future-proof as demand grows through lifetime of the development, that's within the design and access statement and also the transport statement. In terms of cycle linkages, Regent Road already has a dedicated cycle one. So the site is really well provided for and served in terms of stitching in with wider cycle network in and around the city. In terms of ecology, is that enough, Thomas, in relation to transport? Sorry, it was a quite wide-ranging question. Is there anything else immediately? You'd like me to explain before moving on to the topic areas?
Uh thanks Chris. Just the issue of creating a kind of wide, safe, attractive walkway between the stadium. And Sand Hill stations, that wasn't addressed?
Yeah, sure. So you may have seen on the plans which Ian and Colin presented on that we have hard and soft road closures. Which effectively is a ring of steel around the side which will prevent vehicle traffic in. So there is going to be uh provision to enable uh as you can imagine in a post-match capacity. A lot of fans still know of the Regent Road, so the roads are going to be closed. It's going to be marshals on Great Power Street to allow that pedestrian flow through to Sand Hill Station. So very much, you know, certainly in the first thirty minutes post-match. That space is going to be really carefully and safely managed to allow pedestrian egress. Whether that is towards Sand Hill or whether that's towards the city centre. Um in terms.
Later. Carry on Everton, uh sorry, I was like Everton speaking.
Um in terms of ecology, firstly, there is a planning condition in relation to bat boxes and bird boxes. That's one of the conditions inherent mitigation which we've agreed. With Natural England, with the Merseyside Environmental Advisory Service. We also have a biodiversity net gain condition which Colin has already alluded to. We also have a planning condition in relation to the requirement prior to excavation of the water channel. To uh submit an ecology, conservation and habitat creation plan. So that will look at enhancing the ecological value of that water channel. Um that will include reeds and planting, it'll include uh keeping cracks and crevices in some of the walls. Uh having some rough surfaces so there can be colonisation by endemic species, uh so little critters etcetera. So ultimately, you know, it has been thought through, that strategy has been agreed with Natural England and the AS as well. Um in terms of tree planting, uh we have proposed species-rich planting. The planting has dual purpose which is ecology enhancement and it also has wind mitigation requirements as well. There is uh certain other areas of landscaping within the site which perhaps seen all the plans. And ultimately, the site has, except for the water body itself, has no real value. At the moment in ecology terms, it's hard-surfaced. There was a bat roost within the hydraulic tower. We've created a temporary roost or we will create a temporary roost prior to any works to that tower. And once the hydraulic tower is fully restored, then there will be bat box uh facilities within that. And just a wider point on that, we've actually uh revised the lighting strategy. And particularly the architectural lighting strategy for the hydraulic tower to make sure that we don't have an impact on uh bats. So the roost is perhaps going to be uh on one side of the tower where there's, you know, what lights. So we've done a really wide package of ecological mitigation. And that includes the corner raft pontoon which you're going to colonise in dock prior to construction commencement. Does that answer your question Thomas?
That that answers the vast majority of my questions and I think the the phrase you used was uh future-proofing in terms of if. Demand for cycling or electric vehicle charging increases, you can you can respond to that um i- in at future dates. There's only one actually tiny outstanding thing was what the heating system for the stadium is going to be because. There was mentioned in the planning application of the district heating network, but I understand that's. In terms of plugging in to one if one arises, is that, am I am I right about that?
We've got future connectivity. So I think Peel obviously got consent for its district heat network, I think a week or two ago, didn't it? If not a month. Um perhaps Colin, in terms of the heating of the stadium itself at this stage prior to that connection?
Yeah, um again, the heating system is a gas-fired um heating system. Uh naturally, it will be the most efficient um system that can be purchased and designed. Um and again, it will also have a management system, a BMS, that will make sure that it is a. It's not running inappropriately at the wrong times. Um there is a future-proof connection to, as you say, the district heating network. But as you've already pointed out, that is beyond or outside our control at this moment in time. Uh we also need to carry out further studies as to whether or not. A district heating network system would be efficient in a stadium. Um a lot of heating systems need a constant load and a stadium tends to have peaks. And troughs and doesn't necessarily mean that it will be the most efficient method of of heating.
Councillor Crone, can I just ask Ian to come in just to raise some points on sustainability? So please.
Thank you, Denise. Um it you probably recall back on the the presentation, eleven key principles, environment was was one of the key principles. As well as accessibility and transport. And we are absolutely serious that that's our touchstone for this project as a whole. Um but it's also worth noting that from the previous submitted design to the to the the design that we have before us today. We've made huge strides in response to the Sustainable Development Agenda which is itself constantly evolving. And I think the only point that I think, you know, the club would like to make is that we're going to continue that commitment beyond uh this day today. And we'd welcome all kind of views as we move into the more detailed design and through to into construction. To make sure we genuinely are delivering the most sustainable stadium in the Premier League and one of the most sustainable stadiums anywhere in the world.
Carry on, that, to um all the people who've contributed from Everton Football Club so far. And maybe our case officer and the highways and environmental health people. That are now going to be invited in might have some additional comments to make. So I'd like to hand over now to Peter Jones, please.
Thanks Chair, I'm Peter Jones, the the planning also dealt with the application, so um. I'm happy to answer some of the questions that have been raised and then if if members can bear with me, run through the run through the report as well. Um perhaps we can just take them in reverse order. In terms of councillor Crone's questions, I know the club have just responded there, but. I would direct him to to the report as well because I think a number of the points that have been raised, hopefully have have been addressed in in the report. So paragraph four point two eight deals with the measures that the club have taken to to make the development as sustainable as possible. And also their their energy strategy, so so I direct him to that. And then there's also a number of of conditions which 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 Chris Argent, the the agent, mentioned there as well. Um and I think in terms of, if I can just deal with those in in turn. Um in terms of transport, there there is a condition um. Condition um which deals with um the the improvements and how the the measures that are proposed to. Um make the the routes to Sand Hill Station Station better. That's that's a part of one of our highest conditions. Um and as you've heard there as well, that there is the um there is the cycle lane immediately outside on on Regent Road. And there's a condition forty-seven which which deals with that as well. Um and then there's condition forty-five which deals with the pedestrian routes. Um in terms of ecology, there are a number of conditions which 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 address ecology requirements. There's a construction environmental management plan which which sets out a range of requirements to make sure that the development. Um is is ecologically as friendly as as possible during construction. But then also there are conditions which which deal with the final development in terms of biodiversity. Uh and making sure that the 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 water channel is is habitat friendly, so hopefully that answers that question and the question that councillor Thompson raised as well. Um now, just in terms of councillor Thompson's points, I mean, as Colin Chong has mentioned, the isolation structure. Um already exists uh between Bramley Moor Dock and Nelson Dock, so the the um. Boats can't travel up and down there, but that's used to manage the water levels and water water quality. Um and then in terms of terms of noise, there are conditions um which deal with noise as well, condition thirty-seven and and thirty-eight. Um and then a couple of points which which councillor Radford and councillor Conception raised in terms of. Uh infrastructure and um and the and potential for employment and jobs. And I think what I'd like to do is refer members to the uh to appendix ten, which is section one oh six. And that explains the the heads of terms which which outlines the requirements in 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 that area. Um but but Chair, if you if you can bear with me, I think that there are a few few points I I wanted to make in terms of. Explain the reports. It's a really wrong report and I do apologise about that. Uh if length of time it may have taken people to to read it. But as as you remarked at the beginning of the meeting, um I mean, this is a huge application, it's a really important application. And it's a major decision for for the for the committee. Um and and as you'd expect, there's been a significant amount of interest in the application. We we've had representations coming in from all over the world on on the application. Um and then because it's such an important application, um. You know, we've had to go out and do a really robust and extensive consultation exercise. Now that exercise has involved, as you as you've heard from 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 CBRE. Um discussions with a number of organisations and and stakeholders. And I must say that the comments that or the way that people have participated has been really constructive. I think it's been a really helpful exercise. And I'd also think that in terms of the public comments, I think um. You know, the public have had an ample opportunity to express their views. I mean, you you. The 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 on the planning application, we've been at a formal consultation, there's two rounds of consultation. And the responses we've had back are are spelt out very documented in in the report. And then as you've heard, the 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 club have done their own extensive consultation with fans before submitting the application. Um now, it as I go through the report, I I think the the first thing I need to sort of mention if if. Really is in terms of the location. Um now, obviously, this is a really sensitive site. Bramley Moor is a sensitive site in the in the Docker State. Uh now, a lot of the Docker State is 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 derelict and it's just used in parts, lots of it isn't. Isn't working as a as a functioning port any longer, but but it really is still a a sensitive environment, particularly in heritage terms. Um now, the development is going to affect the number of heritage assets and that's spelt out in 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 the report. If you look at paragraph two point eight, that refers to what the designated heritage heritage assets are. Um but just quickly, I'll mention Bramley Moor is grade two listed. Um Nelson Dock is grade two listed, the Regent Road boundary wall is grade two listed, the hydraulic engine house is grade two listed. And then the the site falls within in the conservation, Stanley Dock Conservation Area and the World Heritage Site as well. Um now, those heritage assets are obviously really important, um and they're an important factor that needs to be taken into account. But I I must say that 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 we shouldn't treat it as an embargo on development. Um what it does mean is that when we're making a decision, the committee are making a decision. We we have to take into account um what the significance of those assets are. And then we have to consider very carefully how the development might impact on them. Um we have a legal duty under the um List of Building and Conservation Area Act. Uh to have special regard to the desirability of preserving those assets. Um and and their setting. And then we've got to have special attention um to the desirability of preserving and enhancing the conservation area. National Planning Policy also states that we've got to place great weight on the conservation of those designated assets. And the more important the assets, the greater that weight should be. Um World Heritage Sites are are obviously of international significance. And and development which is causing substantial harm to those assets um of must be wholly exceptional. Now, the developments in this in this case obviously involves infilling the dock. And that so that work is going to cause some some harm. Um now, the magnitude of that harm i- isn't disputed. I think we're we're broadly in agreement with. Um ourselves, the club and Historic England about the level of harm. Um what we have to do is 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 consider um whether on balance the the public benefits of that of that harm. Um and and the development, sorry, the public benefits of the development outweigh that harm. Um and so that's the exercise that we've been through in 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 the report. Um now, obviously clearly, moving the the club is 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 moving home, it's a huge undertaking. Um and and obviously it's a considerable investment proposed by by the club. Um and we've heard from the presentation, um you know, how how they've what what um they've. Um what the level of search and extensive search that they've undertaken to find a new new home. They've also explained to 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 councillors uh why why they believe Bramley Moor is the only suitable and available location. Um you know, and that's despite the challenges that fit building uh within within the dock by being. Um Liverpool's docks are are obviously um a key part of the 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 city's historic fabric. Um and they're internationally significant. Um and the role they played is the reason we why we've got the World Heritage Site. Um and that was designated in two thousand and four. Um we we know the historic docks are 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 exceptional, that the historic landscape is exceptional. Um but we also know that the docks have been in decline for a long period. Um you know, uh and we think that the stadium, it's it's a, as we've heard, it's a really unique opportunity. Um to to repurpose the docks and to create a new landmark and I think breathe life back into the docks. Um now, as you've seen from the presentation, the the club have have gone out of their way and they understand the presentation, sorry, the uh. The sensitivity of the site really from the beginning. And we've worked closely with Historic England and and the club to all the way through the application process, right from the pre-application stage. To to the point we're at now. Um and as you've heard, there's been a number of refinements to the to the design, to improve the design. Those are all detailed out on pages fourteen and fifteen of 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 the reports. Um so I don't didn't want to say too much in terms of the overall design. I think the the images that you've seen today speak to themselves. Um but but I think, you know, we just do need to acknowledge the the efforts that the club have gone to to respect the the character of the area. And that's both in terms of the building architecture, but also how they propose to treat the land and the space around the building. You know, you've seen that from the images how they're proposing to incorporate all the art, sorry, the heritage feature in the building. And also the plans that they've got to to restore the hydraulic engine house. Um I mean, Liverpool, I think by ever by ever all, we'd all agree, it's got a world-class waterfront. And and I think the officer's view is that this scheme does justice to to that to that opportunity, to that waterfront in terms of its design. Um and that's just, that's not just our view, that I think that view's been a view which has been endorsed uh through the the Design Review Panel. As you as you've heard, we've um it's been scrutinised by Places Matter. Uh and Places Matter, as it's set out in the report, have commended how the club have responded positively to the design. Um that does come with the proviso though that we need to make sure that we maintain those, the the quality of development. And and particularly if it's um through those planning conditions. So just got to be on guard and this is with the same goes with all the schemes that when they get to the, you know, if if planning permission is granted and there's a value engineering exercise. Gone through, that we make sure that those quality standards aren't diminished in any way. Um in terms of Historic England's comments, I think Historic England would say that, you know, the discussions have been. Um very productive, um and you know, that they're recognised that the club have gone out of their way to 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 collaborate. Uh and they've made a number of positive improvements to the design. Um and I think Historic England also understand the the attraction of the dock environment. Uh and that's an exceptional location and they also appreciate that the club's desire to to build a new stadium in, you know, which is sensitive to it to its surroundings in the context. Uh but I think as you'll see on the um from their responses on the application, that they're outlined in pages twenty-one of thirty-four of the reports. Um they are opposed to the development, so we do do need to bear that in mind. They've objected because they consider filling in filling the the dock will fundamentally change the historic character. Um and result substantial harm to the significance of the grade-two listed building. And cause harm to the outstanding universal value of the World Heritage Site. And they also object to the listed building application, associated with this building application for the same reasons. Um and they've advised Chair on on that basis that the application should be refused, so we need to we need to note that. Um and they they think the application should be refused unless we, the decision-maker, at this time will be ourselves. Um that the public benefits outweigh the damage to Bramley Moor and the World Heritage Site. But they also go on to say that um given the impact of the proposals on the World Heritage Site which is internationally significant. Then the application should be determined by central government as a decision-maker. So so Chair, if if committee is minded to to approve the application today, then we will need to refer the application to the Secretary of State. Uh for him to decide whether we can call the application in for an inquiry. So page one hundred and fifty-nine of the report outlines the the decision process, just just so that's clear, and the criteria that's that are used to make that decision. Um now, clearly heritage concerns are a key consideration. Um and and you know, it we we respect the fact that Historic England have a duty almost to to arrive at that view. It's that as the nation's statutory heritage advisers, um you know, they have a responsibility to 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 raise that view. And in fairness to Historic England, they've been consistent in terms of that view right from from the outset. They've made their their views views clear on it. So what we we've had to do is 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 to understand the heritage impact is is um is um. To undertake a heritage impact assessment. The club have provided a heritage impact assessment as part of the environmental statement in the report. We've commissioned our own um independent heritage consultant to um to review that heritage impact assessment and make sure that the analysis is 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 correct. Um and I think between ourselves, the club and and and. And I think between ourselves, the club and the heritage advisers and Historic England, then we think there's general agreement about the level of harm. I think the difference between us is whether we think there's sufficient evidence that that harm is necessary. And this is a really key point. Historic England are critical of the site search that's been undertaken that Ian Jenkinson mentioned, and there's a slide showing that. They think that in terms of reviewing alternative sites, that insufficient weight has been afforded to the importance of protecting designated heritage assets. Your officers don't share that view. And as I think you refer to page 61 of the report on paragraph 1.36, we're satisfied that the alternative sites assessment that has been undertaken is a credible and comprehensive assessment. And we've had that view confirmed by leading council. So we've instructed a barrister, and it's one of the country's top QC's, who's confirmed that that assessment is a robust exercise in its sound. Now, what we do think, and we do acknowledge, is that there will be a level of harm to those heritage assets. But we think that that harm, when we go on to look at the wider area, is justified. As a councillor, as a planning authority, we have to take more into account the just heritage. We have to look at social and economic considerations as well and look at the consequences of the development. And I think obviously, members have referred to that this morning, those wider benefits. And I think that's where we differ from Historic England. We believe that the circumstances surrounding the development of the stadium are wholly exceptional and the public benefits sufficiently outweigh the harm that will be caused. Now, the reason we've arrived at that view is spelt out at the beginning of the report in section one. And it's been mentioned today in the presentation provided, the economic assessments and the social value assessments prepared in support of the application. The club have also explained why, in terms of their roots, why they want to stay in North Liverpool. And I think, you know, by any measure, North Liverpool's in an area which is, you know, there's a number of high level of deprivation and it's in an area that needs investment in regeneration. And I think there's no doubt that the stadium proposal has the potential to transform the area. And I think we'd agree that this is a unique opportunity. I mean, the site has been earmarked for development in the Liverpool waters, outline permission. But that's a long-term plan and it's a number, we mentioned today, it was 20 years away before Bramley-Moore would be, this is to be developed. So I think what we're saying, you know, the conclusion that we've reached Chair, is that the benefits of the local, of the scheme for the local community is a point made strongly enough. And that point is, I think, again, I would just point out that, you know, there's been enormous feedback we've had from the application. And the feedback, not just from Everton fans, but from the vast majority of respondents is that how much the, you know, potentially positive impact that the development would have on the local area. And that's at a time when the city needs it the most. So Chair, we are convinced that the development will bring significant public benefits and that those benefits provide a compelling reason to support the application despite Historic England's objection. Just turning very briefly to some of the other matters in the report, which is set out, I mean, we have been working, as you've heard closely, with Mersey Travel and to ensure that the transport arrangements are in place and the site is accessible. And there are a number of other conditions set out in the recommendations, which will ensure that the impact of the development will be minimised during, both during construction and then if, when matches and events are being held as well. There's a legal agreement, and as I mentioned before, the heads of terms of that are spelt out in Appendix 10. And that's been agreed between the club and ourselves. And what that will mean is that the city will, so the club are committed to starting the redevelopment of Goodison within three years. They will repair and refurbish the Hydraulic Engine House before they bring the stadium into use. And they are going to develop a training and employment programme with Liverpool in work. And they will undertake the ecological mitigation measures. And then there's also a range of transport measures as well, including improvements to the area outside Sandal Station. So Chair, sorry if I'm rambling on a little bit there, but I think, just to conclude, I think, based on all, for all those reasons, we're quite satisfied that the development is acceptable. And that's why we're happy to recommend approval Chair. But obviously, I'm happy to answer it or clarify any further points if that would be helpful.
Thank you for that, Peter. Now, I think it's necessary to have those extensive comments from such a very long and intricate report, which I welcomed and which I did my best to assimilate. So I'd like to invite councillor Malcolm Kennedy's question, followed by councillor Joe Hampson. Malcolm.
Yes, Peter, I mean, a very extensive report and it took some reading. But does it come down essentially to two questions? One, were there any credible alternative sites? Two, given the conclusion that there weren't, that the benefits of the development outweigh the dis-benefits? So are we effectively making a choice between the aims of sustainable development and the protection of heritage assets? And are you confident that a national planning inspector would agree with your conclusions?
Yeah, thanks councillor Kennedy. I mean, yes, that's very much the conclusion that we're arriving at. I mean, the National Planning Policy framework expresses a desire that applications should be approved for sustainable development. The exercise we've had to go through in this application is because the development will cause harm to those heritage assets. And that harm is at a higher level, to a substantial level. That should only be allowed in wholly exceptional circumstances. Now, in this case, one of those exceptions, the view that we've reached is that that the public benefits of the development in regeneration terms, what it will do for an area that is so in need of it, is sufficient in this case to outweigh that harm. So that's the conclusion we've very much derived at. The public benefits sort of manifest themselves in a range of ways. And this is partly why the report is so long, because we've been through each and every facet of how the development will achieve public benefits. And it's really the sum of those that allows us to arrive at the conclusion that in this case, in these unique circumstances, the development does outweigh that harm. In terms of all the sites that, you know, that the club have looked at, you've heard there's been a review, it looked at 51 different sites throughout the city. The club are very mindful of the process and they want it to remain in North Liverpool because that's, as you've heard from, that's their heartland. But we have looked at where else in the city that potentially they might be able to locate. But the very much of the view is that there aren't any alternative sites which are suitable and available. Really, it is only Bramley-Moore Dock. And it's on that basis that if Bramley-Moore Dock is the only feasible location, then is the benefit of the site going there, is that sufficient to justify the harm that would cause? And the view we've arrived at is, yes, it is.
Thank you, Peter, that's very clear. Can I invite councillor Joe Hampson, then followed by John Prince, Steve Radford and Helen Thompson? So Joe.
Thank you, Chair. Malcolm's covered some of the questions I want to ask. Well, I think from a comment perspective, I think Everton today have presented a compelling case to request permission to build on the Bramley-Moore. I think our officers and certainly Peter have done an incredible piece of work over the past, was it three years, Peter? It seems a lifetime. But you've done an incredible piece of work and the people that surround you. And, you know, I hope that the council allow you to go and have a fortnight's well-earned rest after all this. I think for me, when Jess Hartley created his Dock system, it was created for commerce, it was created for profits, it was created for work. He wouldn't have envisaged that 50, 100 years on or whatever, we would have a heritage site. And our heritage in Liverpool, and certainly to me, from North Liverpool, who had parents who shipped out of those docks for 10 months, 12 months at a time, and brothers who went away to sea, and people and friends and family who worked on that dock or serviced that dock. The docks are historically important to us, but they shouldn't be allowed to stand in the way of progress. We are actually talking about a dock that was in effect a coal yard. It's a very important coal yard in its time, but nevertheless, a coal yard. I think Everton in terms of looking at the issues to preserve the heritage within that complex, I think is commendable. And I'm absolutely delighted that they're prepared to spend an awful lot of money to protect the heritage of North Liverpool Dock. There's been great consternation from Historic England about the Dock Wall. And it's not the first time I've said it, but the Dock Wall was built for one reason, one reason only, to keep the people of North Liverpool out. When people the other side of the world were dying of starvation, they were dying of cholera, they were dying of typhoid, that Dock Wall kept them from getting access to anything that helped them survive. And part of that Dock Wall was built by Napoleonic prisoners of war, slave labour. Napoleonic prisoners of war died building that wall. Yeah, everybody in Historic England thought, oh, themselves protect something or part of something that was built by slave labour who died during the process. Are we proud of that? Of course we're not. It was part of our heritage. The impact upon Everton will have, bringing that stadium into Bramley-Moore, will have a massive impact upon the people of North Liverpool and the wider regions of Liverpool and the North West. But talking, and Historic England are talking about depriving or trying to deprive an area of employment, not only employment but good quality employment. Everton have a reputation for employing and providing good quality employment. What it will do to the 10 Streets, and we're already seeing the regeneration of 10 Streets, that will have a massive impact upon people and companies who want to come into and invest in what is going to be, in some respects, a boom time for North Liverpool. It's vitally important for our kids, our kids to get good quality work. And that's what Everton will provide and the surrounding area will provide. And I find it a little bit insulting that you have Historic England, who don't live in Liverpool, don't even know where they live, but they can come in and pontificate and ask for a call-in that could place that project in jeopardy and delay what Everton's trying to do. And what they're trying to do is create employment, create an iconic building, stadium on the waterfront, that will hopefully not just be used for football, but be used for a diverse number of businesses and also used by the wider community and become probably one of the most sought-after visitor attractions, hopefully, within Liverpool. I think they quoted 1.4 million visitors. I'm assuming they're not all football fans, but it will bring in life back into that Dock area. And I think it's absolutely imperative and absolutely important that this committee today endorses fully and supports 100%. And when we have to send that report to the Secretary of State, because Peter's saying we have to. I hope Peter can encapsulate some of the views, some of the passion that I know this committee holds for this project. Yeah, and by saying yes today, we can help Everton take one step, one more step forward to developing their vision for North Liverpool. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, councillor Hampson, and I'm sure Peter will do that because he's guided us thus far extremely well through all of this. I'm going to invite councillor John Prince now, followed by Steve Radford and then Helen.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start by thanking Everton Football Club for an absolutely outstanding presentation. And also like to thank all the officers producing that 500-word report for us, a 500-page report for us, which is covering absolutely everything. Now, I'm actually very interested in heritage because I used to be a history teacher. And this is a case where what was basically was a dock, no longer has any significance as a dock. It's not a working dock, there's no chance of it becoming a working dock again. We've already got a heritage centre in the Albert Dock, so we can't really have a second Albert Dock. So therefore, this to me is a really ideal solution for what at the moment is a totally derelict site. Yes, it has historic value, but I think Everton Football Club have gone out of their way to fit in all the historic items into their design. I'm particularly impressed personally with the railway lines. And I think the photographs also show the importance of the water channel. Because the water channel shows that although we're losing most of the actual dock area, we are keeping the line of the dock, if you look at the photographs. We're actually opening up an area which at the present is totally closed to the public. And it can be opened through the week, it's not just for football fans, it's open through the week and they will be able to go in and look at it. And if they walk to the edge, they'll be able to see the full line of the docks, which is something at the moment they can't do. I also want, need to say that the actual design of the stadium is again, in my view, in keeping with the other heritage aspects. In that it is not over high, it fits neatly with the landscape. And I just think Everton have gone absolutely out of their way to design this stadium in line with all the historic needs. And it would be, as Joe has just said, it would be a great opportunity for the whole area. Thank you.
I'll give your comments councillor Prince, and now over to Steve Radford.
Chairman, I've come in from the point of view, not any particular affiliation or interest in football per se, but it seems to be an overwhelming positive case. The choices of alternative sites like Walton Park or Kirby, well, certainly, I would have been the first to go to the walls to campaign to save the public open space. Having the prospect of it going to Kirby would take an economically deprived area, a knock-down in North Liverpool. That would be without any consideration devastating. I do find this argument about heritage harm a bit pervers. Why do I mean that? This city has been littered with historic buildings where people have stopped anything happening to and the buildings have literally gone to a position of total collapse. An old building, derelict and collapsing, but the public aren't accessed, is not, in my view, a heritage harm, it's a heritage or a heritage asset. Leaving them mothballed and deteriorating is the heritage harm. Putting heritage sites to a working, economically viable usage and keeping the key features, like the hydraulic, features like the railway lines as John said, is how you make historic buildings have a future. Leaving them mothballed to deteriorate over time is not an option. I think we should entertain and we should not be hung up on. So I'm quite robust about it. I think the investment in public transport infrastructure is a fantastic bonus of this scheme. And if you were going to design a football centre afresh, say we hadn't looked at the Everton, if we looked at a fresh site for a football club, where would you want it? You'd want it on the waterfront, you'd want it near to the city centre, you'd want it near to a railway station. So we're getting what we would want if we were doing a fresh line of site development. So I'm absolutely robust. It's the right thing for the city, it's the right thing for Walton. I think I do have a total respect for Joe Hampson's knowledge of his own community. And, but I think it's the right thing all round for the city. And the heritage harm is leaving the site the heritage harm is leaving the site derelict. Leaving a site mothballed with no future, that is the heritage harm, not developing it and enhancing it into public access and public use.
Thank you councillor Radford. And now councillor Helen Thompson.
Thank you. And just a really small point that actually echoes what councillor Hanson, councillor Prince and councillor Radford have just said. We've been told that what we're looking at really is balancing the economic and the sporting and the visitor benefits against the heritage, the significant harm to the heritage asset. But actually, in addition to harm to the heritage asset, there is benefit to heritage asset. The hydraulic tower is going to be renovated and put to good use. Various bits of dock furniture, like the railway lines and the capstone, are going to be renovated and visible. And the whole site is going to be open to the public, which it isn't at the moment. So that was my point. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Now, I don't seem to have any other people coming forward. Put your hands up now if you wish to speak. And to come back to what has been said today, what we are talking about is summed up in the report, I think, on page 482, paragraph four. We've got to decide today whether we agree with our planning officers who concluded that there are no adverse impacts which would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the identified benefits. That's the point. Everybody recognise there are adverse impacts to our historic waterfront, but we're deciding today whether we think they are significantly and demonstrably outweighed by the identified benefits. And I would say that from the debate we've had today, that people think that these benefits to the public realm are unique. They're necessary to achieve the sustainability of this part of Liverpool. And that everybody has agreed that Everton Football Club have done a really fantastic job over three years to get us a football stadium, a public realm that truly is of value and will improve our public image for this great city. So I'm now going to move that the recommendation be approved and that permission be granted subject to the Secretary of State not wishing to intervene, together with both a legal agreement and conditions as proposed by the head of planning. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Just before we move to the formal vote stage, just a few additional points I need to clarify for the benefit of members present. First of all, can I refer you to page 169 of your published agenda, which actually sets out the formal case officer recommendation proposed resolution in relation to this particular matter. For purposes of clarity and just for confidence sake in terms of what I mentioned at the start of proceedings, just for clarity, you were dealing with three planning applications for this particular item of business. The one in terms of the planning application approval for the stadium in the Bramley Moor Dock, and then the two associated listing building consent applications. They are all being dealt with collectively in this particular resolution. Can I also draw members' attention to point F of the resolution, which refers to the requirement for payment and completion of the agreement of legal fees. The amount stated of £1,500 is the minimum required, so it is likely due to the scale of the proposed development that the level of payment required will exceed that amount. Just so we are aware, Chair, and for members' benefit and clarity.
Goodbye, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Are there any further comments from members before we formally move to the vote? No? Thank you. In which case, Chair, your vote please. Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Councillor Doyle? Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just before I continue with the vote, can I ask all the members and those participating, please turn your microphones off at this stage. It's just interfering with the audio quality. Thank you. Moving on to councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat? Thank you. Councillor Prince?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. And finally councillor Steve Radford? Just reiterate your vote, please, Steve, you honour me.
Agreed and welcomed.
Thank you councillor Radford. That concludes the voting on this application and the two associated listed building consent applications. The outcome of the vote is that it is unanimously approved by the committee, the effect of which therefore being that the three applications together with the recommendation of committee will therefore be referred to the Secretary of State for consideration and appropriate action from there. Thank you, colleagues. With that in mind, I suggest we move on to the interlinked item of business, number three on today's agenda, which relates to the Goodison Park Stadium on Goodison Road, the report for located in County Ward. You again have a very detailed case officer report on pages 491 to 556 of your published agenda. And again, Chair, as you recall, we have a detailed presentation to come, as well as a number of representatives on behalf of the football club to address us.
Yes, thank you for that, Michael. So I'm going to pass over now to the representatives and agents for Everton Football Club to show us our extended presentation and address the virtual committee. And once they conclude their presentation and comments, they'll be present to answer any questions if required. So I'm going to hand back over to Denise now.
Thank you, Chair. The stadium development that we've already discussed is one part of what has been called the People's Project. This project incorporates a new home for the club whilst also unlocking an innovative community-led legacy development at Goodison Park. Everton is proud of its strong enduring commitment to preserving culture and heritage, to regeneration and to creating positive social value. And it's these principles that have underpinned our approach for what we aspire to do with Goodison Park once the new stadium is built. Committee members, when we were in the very early stages of our stadium project, I must admit to having many sleepless nights wondering about how we would one day exit Goodison Park and leave Liverpool for. How could we just leave our home and the community we lived in, contributed to and been supported by after nearly 130 years? And then it struck me that the answer was simple. We don't. We don't need to leave. We don't need to receive a land receipt for Goodison Park. We don't need to sell Goodison Park off to the highest bidder to create an unsympathetic development that would have minimal value to our community. We could do something innovative, something that maximises social value, something that is community-led and positively contributes to the regeneration of this area and our spiritual home. Something that builds on the pioneering work of Everton in the community, which currently engages and supports hundreds of thousands of people in our region each and every year. And something that supports Liverpool City Council and other health and social welfare organisations in their day-to-day operations. Our principle for this important part of the project was simple. We wanted to use the Goodison Park footprint to generate as much social value as possible. Knowing that Kirkdale and the County Wards are among some of the most disadvantaged in the country, we wanted to use this opportunity to build on the work of our charity and the investment we have made into derelict buildings around Goodison Park, which already totals more than £10 million of investment. And we wanted to do that to create a brighter future in and around Liverpool for. Again, we engaged and consulted extensively with the public and other stakeholders, including local residents and businesses, to develop our outline plans. Plans which could include the development of education, health and enterprise facilities alongside appropriate retail and housing. Our proposals build on our recent investment into our Goodison campus and complement the emerging £1 million master plan for the County District Centre. The impact of the pandemic on communities has brought into even sharper focus the role football can have in benefiting society economically and socially. And we take that responsibility very seriously at Everton. While winning football matches is, of course, our primary objective as a club, I'm sure you can see that the People's Project is about so much more than football. Through Bramley Moor Dock, we can drive economic and social regeneration for the entire city region, whilst at Goodison Park, we can continue and scale up our work to improve opportunities for a community that continues to face many social challenges. We find this hugely exciting. A project that will improve life chances for hundreds of thousands of people for generations to come and a project befitting a People's Club. I'd like to hand over to Helen and Alex, who will talk you through our outline proposals. Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, Denise. This is an outline planning application, but it is underpinned by strong design principles. Firstly, it's the need to celebrate the legacy of Everton Football Club and also to respect the historic relationships with buildings in the area, particularly the Church of St Luke located at the north west corner of the site. Secondly, is the need to establish connections, strengthening east-west routes through the site to create a street pattern and to knit this development into the existing community. Thirdly, is the desire to create green links through the site, linking from the retained pitch area in the northern end through to Stanley Park to the south side, through a series of car-free routes. These design principles have resulted in a series of parameter plans, an example of which is shown on the left-hand side, and this is what we are applying for the planning permission. These parameter plans define the maximum extent and height of development plots and also the amount and type of development to be delivered within them. The parameter plans also show the location of public realm areas and location of open space, as well as routes through the site. An illustrative master plan, which is not submitted for approval, is shown on the right-hand side. And this demonstrates how these design principles and parameter plans could be delivered in practice through future reserve matters submissions. The master plan and the parameter plans have evolved during the determination of this application, in direct response to feedback received from historic England, a places matter design review, and feedback from the conservation, urban design and planning officers of the council. Positive changes which have been made in relation to these comments received include reducing the height of the development plots, particularly along the southern frontage of the site adjacent to Walton Lane, in order to respect the proximity to Stanley Park, which is a grade two star registered park. Similarly, the development heights have been reduced around the north west corner of the site in order to respect the setting of the Church of St Luke. We've also increased the permeability around the site by adding in more east-west connections. And thirdly, we've significantly reduced the amount of retail floor space proposed in order to limit the impact upon existing retail areas, such as the County Road District Centre. Sustainability has been a key part of this development proposal. We've considered sustainability in terms of economic, social impact and environmental sustainability. This is a highly accessible site. It's within walking distance to key existing and proposed facilities and also to public transport links. The proposed development is mixed-use, which in itself reduces the need to travel by private car. We're also encouraging cycle access through the provision of cycle parking and also through off-site highway improvement works. We intend to complement rather than compete with County Road District Centre in providing a reduced amount of retail floor space just at the south west corner of the site, which will link into the existing Everton in the community campus along Spalley Lane. Parking is provided on site in order to prevent the use of parking on existing residential streets in the area, thus reducing the impact on existing residents. There'll be opportunities for sustainable drainage throughout the site, and biodiversity is a key part of the plans, including the retention of an area of the pitch and the creation of green links alongside the provision of street trees. Alex will now talk through the legacy of the club and the delivery of the proposed development.
Thank you, Helen. We have been deeply rooted in L4 since our formation way back in 1878. Us as a club and our charity have been helping to tackle some of the hardest hitting social issues of the past 30 years, including mental and physical wellbeing, youth engagement, employment and education, to name but a few. We've consulted with local residents, participants, businesses and stakeholders to understand what issues they feel they face now and issues they feel they may face in the future, which has helped to shape our outline plans. And this will continue as the project develops. A core principle of the Goodison Legacy Scheme when we set out on this journey was for this site to still be instantly recognisable as Everton Football Club. Some of the ways in which we propose to do this include the layout of the development plots to represent where the stands currently are, ensuring that the Dixie Dean statue and memorial plaques remain on site, a partial retention of the pitch and the centre circle within our landscaping plans to ensure that football can still be played on the pitch at Goodison Park. Just north of that pitch, we have a play street situated in the lively Gladys Street end that will ensure that hustle and bustle remains in that area. We want to maintain connection to our neighbours and ensure that we are sympathetic in the deconstruction of Goodison Park to know what legacy items we could potentially use at this site and also at Bramley Moor Dock. This should be a place to remember and a place to visit for Evertonians now and in the future. This site is for the benefit of our community. There'll be open and green spaces for people to access and enjoy. And the social benefits this scheme will bring include employment opportunities, the community facilities that it will provide and enabling community growth. In order to deliver on this, we've been researching and analysing what those different potential users could be and the feasibility of those. We have a wide range of opportunities to help to positively impact and enhance the area of L4. It's important to note that these are only our ideas at this stage based on current consultation, but at the moment, we're exploring, as Denise mentioned earlier, a mix of housing with a range of residential types to provide a home for everybody, potential cafe, restaurant and small shop type retail facilities, a commercial attraction potentially to explore how we remember Goodison in an interactive way using the latest technologies, a healthcare provision, supportive living and an education zone to provide opportunities for lifelong education, but also considering how this interacts with nearby educational institutions. And importantly, to enable the growth of EITC, whether that's through programme delivery space or office space, but this is very much a core principle of this scheme. Moving on to delivery. We have a track record of delivery in L4. We're trusted by our local community and work alongside our local stakeholders for many years. Our commitment to deliver the Goodison Legacy Scheme is demonstrated through the schemes that we have delivered to date. We've been converting derelict buildings into thriving community assets, as you can see in the before and aftershocks on screen. The quality of this delivery, the fact that these buildings are owned and operated by our charity, shows our devotion to our community and our intentions for the future. The quality of this delivery, the fact that these buildings are owned and operated by our charity, shows our devotion to our community and our intentions for the future. The outline phasing plan shows these seven development plots are envisaged to be delivered in five to six stages. Although this will be based on what the eventual uses of those development plots are and agreed with future partners and Liverpool City Council. With the aim to cause as minimal disruption as possible to the local area. Detailed engagement and consultation with stakeholders across the relevant industries of these eventual uses will help inform that detailed design. And all the while, we will retain control of this development to ensure a coherent approach and maintain the legacy vision. In addition to the ten billion already invested in the physical regeneration of the local area, we also have the People's Place on the Way. Which will be a purpose built mental health facility owned and operated by EITC. This is because helping our community and helping our city is what we do. The Goodison Legacy Project and the People's Project provide an opportunity to do this on an even grander scale. To run more programmes, engage more people and change and save even more lives. And so to summarise, you'll see that the Goodison Legacy Project has been at the very heart of this journey since we set out, forming part of our core key eleven principles. It's a unique regeneration initiative harnessing the power of football and more specifically Everton to create a civic inheritance community scheme that we can all be proud of. We've received broad support to date through our public consultations and local drop-in sessions as discussed earlier. And this is something that we will aim to maintain throughout the journey. The Goodison Legacy Scheme shows our commitment to a non-abandonment of L4. It further embeds us within our community and shows Everton delivering for the people of Liverpool and all the social benefits that this scheme will generate. We have consulted and will continue to consult with local residents, businesses and stakeholders. It will introduce a significant level of private investment in northern Liverpool at a time when we've never needed it more. And it recognises and champions the importance of heritage of our current home, of the proposed site for our new home and the footballing and cultural heritage of our city. Delivering a lasting legacy from the People's Club. Thank you.
Are there any other people from Everton Football Club who are going to speak now, Helen? Or would you have to conclude what you've got to say Denise?
That concludes the presentation Chair, thank you.
Well, I'd like to invite questions now from the committee. councillor Kennedy.
It's probably a call, get up and see who it is and if it's not.
Councillor Kennedy, can other people turn their microphones off please?
Um, I noticed in the report that it said internal roads would be unadopted. What is the reason for that? Is it because they wouldn't reach adoptable standards with regard to width or something like that? Or and if they are unadopted, who is going to take responsibility for future maintenance?
Could you arrange for that to be answered please Denise?
Helen, you okay? Uh, yes, so the um, the roads are being provided internally. And the intention is to have them to adoptable standards, but we will not be offering them for adoption. And because they're a part of the site that is to be managed in the future under the control of the club. And it's also a key part of the parking strategy to have on-street parking. And therefore the control of that could be delivered through the club rather than through Liverpool City Council.
Now I have councillor Helen Thompson followed by councillor John Prince. Helen.
Sorry if I raised my hand, I didn't realise I had, that was an error.
Yes, you had Helen.
Right, first of all, once again, thanks to uh, thanks to Everton Football Club for another excellent presentation. Um, I would be voting for this. Um, I think there's some excellent ideas brought into that in terms of. You know, improvements for the local community. I just want to raise one item though. Uh, which actually hasn't been mentioned so far throughout all this. And it's about particularly the Bullens Road stand at Goodison Park. There's actually two stands there, the Bullens Road stand. And the Gladys Street stand, which were designed by a man called Archie Ball Leach. And he designed a lot of football grounds, forty football grounds or park stands between eighteen ninety and nineteen thirty nine. At Goodison, they've got two of those stands. Throughout the country, gradually the number of stands left in existence is reducing. And now we've only got a handful of these stands left. Last year we lost the ones. It turned White Hart Lane and Spurs. There's now only Archie Ball Leach stands left and I think it's Dundee. Aberdeen who are looking to move grounds as well. Crystal Palace where you really can't see because it's been extended that much over the top of the Leach building. Liverpool Football Club are exactly the same where the main stand has been leaded out twice over the top of the Leach building, so you can't really see it. Portsmouth where they're still standing, Crystal Palace, Rangers where it's a protected building, but it's just the facade which is off the building and Fulham. I think that's all that's left and that over time, every year happens, another one of these gets demolished. And I say I will be supporting this outline application, but would there be any way of keeping at least part of the Bullens Road stand? And putting some of those facilities in it? I just want to quote from the biographer. Because there has been a book written about Archie Ball Leach, which obviously I've got. And he said when they got the demolition of the Trinity Road stand in Villa Park in the year two thousand. Surely Birmingham and football has lost out by allowing one of its finest buildings to be demolished. Is there any way, looking for, we've got years to work on this, is there any way of putting some of those facilities into at least part of the Bullens Road stand? Thank you.
Okay. Everton Football Club and outline application.
Okay Chair, I think we'd still like to give a response if that's okay Chair.
Please do.
Yes.
Um, just with regards to Bullens Road and Gladys Streets, um, they are actually the two oldest stands at the football ground. Um, and probably contain the majority of existing problems that we have at Goodison Park mainly due to its age. Um, the structural elements that you refer to, particularly the truss that runs across the top of Bullens Road. We are looking to try and salvage some of those heritage architectural assets. And maybe even incorporate them into the design at the new Bramley-Moore Stadium. Um, but with regards to incorporating existing facilities within Bullens Road and Gladys Streets, I think it would probably be. I suppose inappropriate, the stands themselves are timber and they wouldn't allow us to comply to current building control regulations. So although we can look at trying to maximise some of those heritage assets within the new stadium. And we can look to maximise some of those heritage assets on the site as we develop, you know, the detailed design of Goodison Park Legacy Project. We haven't quite determined what the extent of that would be yet.
I think councillor Prince, it's something that's really important to us and really important to Evertonians and you will see how we've. Embedded that design in terms of the brickwork in the new stadium. So it's something we have spoken about at length about how we can look to have. This reclamation and make sure that we can sort of actively use as many products as we can within the new stadium, but only when obviously it's safe to do that.
Yes.
Thank you for that. But as I said, it is outlined at the moment and I can see that. I think Everton Football Club here with the People's Project is trying to do planning from the base up instead of top down. So I'm sure you'll take account of all these comments. Um, now councillor Hudson, I saw your hand go up, but it's not up at the moment. Did you wish to speak?
Chair, I'll come back in after the officer's spoken.
Okay, and now it's councillor Steve Bradford. I think you need to unmute Steve.
Slow on the IT. Thank you Chairman. Um, I must admit, I don't know the area as much until this year because we were delivering a lot of hampers to older people in the area. And it is quite a congested, narrow road system. So I think the fact that Everton are planning for. What I would broadly describe as east west um, road access, I think is actually incredibly helpful. And I think we all know a lot of the local shopping areas, including County Road, are suffering at the moment. Um, so I think the fact that they aren't just going for a quick buck sale of just massive retail and. And cashing in on that, but a mixed development is actually very welcome. I think the idea of it being an outline is actually sensible because. Things will evolve as each part of the seven sections of the site develop and you need a bit of flexibility to. To catch the trends and demographic opportunities that come along. So I think it's a good outline. And I think it's right that we're dealing with an outline rather than a set in stone development because it gives flexibility to respond to opportunities and. Maybe changes that will take place in the economic footprint. So I think it's really quite, quite uh, it's a development with full sight.
I think councillor Bradford and I'm sure our case officer will also have a comment on that. Now Malcolm, you actually have got your hand up, but I don't know if you intend to want to speak again. Would you put it down please? So there seemingly being no further questions on this. I'm going to ask our case officer to comment on the presentation and summarise the issues on the application. So it's over to you Felicity.
Thanks very much Chair. Um, good afternoon everyone. I'm Felicity Collins. I'm the case officer for the Goodison Park application. Um, I think you've just seen a fairly thorough presentation, which has emphasised the role of this application. As part of the Everton Football Club People's Project, intending to secure a legacy for Goodison Park. In the event that the new stadium at Bramley-Moore Dock is delivered. You have my full report in front of you, but I'll just spend just a few minutes running through the key points of the application and the planning assessment. And I'll be happy to take any questions at the end. Hopefully I can pick up through that couple of the points that have just been raised in questions to the club. So yes, the application is made in outline with all matters of appearance, means of access, layout, landscaping and scale reserved for later details. So the application is essentially seeking permission for the principal of development and the amount of development in each use class. In order that its impact can be assessed and to demonstrate that that proposed quantum of development is realistic. The application includes that set of parameter plans which you've just seen briefly mentioned in the club's presentation. If approved, those plans would set a master plan framework for the detailed reserve matters applications. And further, the design and access statement includes guiding principles which goes into quite a lot of detail in terms of plot briefs. Principles for the street hierarchy and character and landscaping, including that park space at its heart. The developments intended to be phased, as you saw on the last slide of the presentation. And to give that flexibility for the application, for the development to come forward. And as the market evolves and after the club has redeveloped the stadium. And officers consider that the parameters and principles provide a robust set of people focused design guidelines. That will help ensure the development will have an identity and a clear sense of place. It sets a framework for a development that's fitting. To the established local community and respectful of the club's involvement in the area and the history of the site. There's adequate scope to make provision for fully inclusive and sustainable designs at the detailed stage. And where necessary, we've recommended specific requirements be conditioned. As you've heard in the presentation from the club, the intention is for commercial uses to be located at the Spallow Lane junction and leading up Goodison Road. And the more institutional uses potentially a care home, community space and a school to be located on Bullens Road, close to the existing primary school. And further community uses placed close to the church. Residential units are present throughout the site and would be a mix of apartments, terraces, dwellings and mews houses. The intention is to provide a range of house types, size and tenure in order to increase choice in the local housing market. As you've heard in the presentation, heights have been reduced in response to comments from statutory consultees and from our urban design and conservation officers. And we're now comfortable with the heights proposed. The potential impacts of the development in respect of the heritage assets, the environment, local amenity and traffic access and parking have been assessed. On the basis of the proposed parameters plans. The supporting technical assessments and environmental statement have been prepared in accordance with statutory requirements. And have been reviewed by the relevant statutory consultees and by suitably qualified council officers and their advisors. As I've set out in the report, this project would only go ahead once the stadium has been replaced and conditions are put in place to secure this. On that basis, Sport England has no objection. In conservation terms, as we've just had a brief discussion there, the. The application would mean complete demolition of the existing stadium. And although it's subject to a certificate of immunity from listing, it does have some value as a non-designated heritage asset. And as councillor Prince has raised, there is some architectural interest in the, the, the history of Archie Ball Leach and those remaining stands. We have proposed conditions for recording of the stadium building before its demolition. And we have also recommended conditions for details to be provided of retained heritage features and interpretation in the replacement scheme. The development of a mix of types of residential properties aligns with the site's designation within the primarily residential area. In both the UDP and the Liverpool Local Plan, which is emerging and is further supported by more general, local and national planning, housing policies. The inclusion of other complementary community and commercial uses and the retention of a park space is driven by the club's intentions. For a lasting legacy that will benefit the local community and this is supported by planning policy and by officers. In relation to retail uses specifically as mentioned by the club, and the amount of floor space, particularly in relation to retail has been reduced. Since the original submission in order to protect the vitality and viability of County Road District Centre. Although there are vacant units in those centres, officers have reviewed the reduced provision and are satisfied that that amount. Secured and restricted by condition is an appropriate amount to serve the day to day needs of the development. The assessment of the potential impacts on environmental amenity in relation to air quality, noise and vibration, daylight, sunlight, ground conditions. Water resources and flood risk in both construction and operation have been reviewed by officers and statutory consultees and found to be acceptable. Where necessary, conditions are proposed to secure further details and mitigation measures. The traffic impacts of development and the parking provision has been confirmed to be acceptable and necessary highways improvements have been conditioned. These include improvements for pedestrian and cycle permeability and bus stop upgrades. Quality place making and sustainable design is, we believe, at the heart of the guiding principles for this development and the master plan. Includes a new publicly accessible park space and arrival spaces at Goodison Road and Bullens Road as well as play streets. Which link the park space to Walton Lane. The finer details for these spaces will be provided at the reserve matters stage and so accordingly. It will be confirmed at that point whether the requirements of policy OE fourteen in respect of public open space. And in, in respect of policy HD twenty three in respect of street trees.
Two weeks.
If that provision is not made on site, commuted sums will be required in the.
It's going to heal itself, yeah.
And then. People, please turn off their microphones.
Thank you.
Here Felicity please.
I've nearly finished. Thank you Chair. So the applicant has agreed to payment of contributions in relation to the public art strategy and monitoring. And just to reiterate that point, it will be confirmed at the reserve matters stage whether contributions are required. Um, in respect of street trees and public open space. space, depending on what's confirmed to be provided within the site itself. So in conclusion, it's been demonstrated to the satisfaction of your officers that the proposal, subject to the recommended conditions and section 106 agreement, accords with the statutory development plan and the MPPF, and there are no adverse impacts that would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the public benefits. As such, we recommend approval of the application. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I must apologize because I didn't invite councillor Tom Cronin, I know Joe Hampson's waiting. But if you're out there, would you come in now please, and then we'll have Joe Hampson's comments and questions. Councillor Cronin?
Chair, I believe councillor Cronin is no longer present and his comments will largely be predominantly focused on the prior application.
Okay, it's just I did have him down for this application as well. So it's over to you councillor Hampson.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Felicity, and thank you Everton Football Club. I think lots of developers in the city can learn a lot of lessons from the process that you've gone through. I mean, it's sad that Goodison Park has got to go, but the reality is it's well past its lifespan, and I guess there'll be lots and lots of people who are sad to see it go, but that's progress, I'm going to need to move on. I don't think we should underestimate the work that Everton and the community do. I know you do lots of publicity yourselves and it's well recognised, but the amount and scope of work that Everton and the community do is absolutely incredible, and it's something that I know you're very proud of, and it's something that you should be very proud of. I think that reflects on this planning application, the consultation that you've gone through, the level of detail that consultation has brought up, and the fact that you revisit it on occasions, and even tend to revisit it as an ongoing part of the project. I think it's an exciting project, I think it ticks lots and lots of boxes, from whether it be housing, from what the community needs, and I think it's really interesting in terms of your retail offer will not be in competition with County Road and Walton Road, and I know Everton are involved in the committee set up to try and reinvigorate County Road and Walton Road, and you play a key role in that as well. So for me, it is a responsible organisation, an extremely responsible manner, to deliver a project that not only will satisfy yourselves, but I believe will satisfy the public and the residents that live in around that area, and I'm sure any issues, any problems that arise as we go through, because a project of this nature does bring issues and problems because of close proximity of houses living around it, they will be sourced very, very quickly, so I've got absolutely no hesitation in supporting this application Chair.
Thank you councillor Hampson. I don't see anybody else indicating. Are there any further questions or comments? All right then, well I think I'm going to move on to vote then. Michael, is there anything else I should be including? Michael Jones?
Thank you Chair, not for this particular application, no.
Okay. So can I move that the recommendation be approved and that permission be granted subject to a legal agreement and conditions as proposed by the head of planning? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, any further comments from members? No, thank you. In which case firstly your vote please Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hampson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez? Councillor Juarez, are you still with us?
Yes, sorry, I'm having problems with my microphone. Agreed.
Thank you councillor. And finally councillor Radford?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this particular application, and I can confirm that the voting is unanimous in favour of the application and is therefore granted subject to a legal agreement and conditions as proposed, and that therefore concludes our voting and consideration of these interlinked applications. Chair, your closing comments please.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for all their time and patience today. It's been an extremely long report even just to read, and I can see that everybody's giving it all the care and notice that it needed for a very historic, unanimous and fully attended planning committee decision, and I hope all that's going to be taken into account when this matter is going to be passed to the Secretary of State, who may or may not decide to call it in. But I think the very extensive debate, the really excellent groundwork that's been done, both by our own planning officers, I'd really like to praise them for this, and by Everton Football Club, who I think have really demonstrated that they are a power for good in our community, is all going to be taken into account because now we have made the decision. I always like to see planning developments that the planning committee have agreed, go ahead as soon as practically possible. So thank you everybody, an excellent meeting all round, and I'll see you at the next planning committee.